Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call the March 17th meeting to order at 9:06 AM. Start with a moment of silence. Do we have any dedications today from any of the board members? If not, we'll dedicate this moment of silence to the folks who have lost their lives to the coronavirus in the United States. Mr. Roby, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, are there any extra items not appearing on the posted agenda today?
One extra that I asked to place on.
Yeah. We'll add that as... So we have three items, actually.
That would be four?
Four, yeah, sorry about that. So item 4.1, consider of an extra item, consideration of eradication of proclamation of local emergency due to COVID-19. Take them all up individually or as a group?
Each one.
Okay. I'll go ahead and read them out then here. 4.2, extra item, consideration of extra agenda item, consideration of impacts of the four-week closure of local schools and the county workforce and possible direction to staff. 4.3, consideration of proposed closure of Lake County library branches due to COVID-19. And number four, 4.4 will be the Board Supervisor of County of Lake State of California, a resolution imposing substantive limitations on residential and commercial evictions, proposed by Supervisor Brown.
And are we doing 4.1?
Yes.
Or did I miss that one?
I did, I read 4.1.
So, Mr. Chair, on 4.1, I would move that it was, that it meets the criteria as an extra, as it was presented to us after the posting of the last agenda and needs to be addressed before the posting of the next available agenda.
All right. Been a motion?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify too, when the public speaks to you today or staff, we're gonna have them do it from the standing podium. I see the sheriff is getting ready to come up when you're ready, but no seated speaking.
And as you see, we have some wipes there also, so you can clean up there after you're done or before, whichever one you prefer, as you move through it, maybe both, so, yes.
Sorry to interrupt you, in motion.
All right.
Literally.
Literally. All right. There's been a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item 4.2, we're gonna go through each one?
I wasn't writing them down as to what they were, but I...
School closure.
Consideration of impact to the four-week closure.
I move that we take this up as an extra because it came to us after the posting of the last, of this agenda and needs to be addressed before the posting of the next agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
4.3, consideration of proposed closure of Lake County library branches due to COVID-19.
Mr. Chair, I propose that we take this up, make a motion that we take this up as it came to us after the posting of the last agenda and needs to be addressed before the next available agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
And on my item, I would ask that it be taken up, the resolution imposing substantive limitation on residential and commercial evictions be taken up as it came up after the posting of the last, of this agenda and needs to be addressed before the next available agenda.
Thank you.
Excellent. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that'll be item number 4.4. Okay. We'd like to go ahead and move right into item 4.1, consider of ratification of a proclamation of a local emergency due to COVID-19.
Good morning, board members. Can you hear me, Fernando? Get really close to this thing. Okay. In light of the public health emergency declared by the health officer that was ratified at last week's meeting and in light of the, what appears to be an expansion of cases of COVID-19 occurring in surrounding communities, and also considering the fact that we don't have any cases of, confirmed cases of COVID-19 in this county, and towards an effort to keep that in place, as well as to make us available of federal funding or state funding that may come about as a result of this proclamation, I declared a state of emergency on March 13th. The state of emergency has to be ratified to remain in effect within seven days pursuant to the government code, and this part item is brought to you for consideration of ratification.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions from the board?
I don't have a question. I do have a comment, though. And Dr. Pace is here, too, and I know he brought his proclamation or his declaration, I don't, we have so many variations of these, but, and, you know, while, while I still feel, you know, most of these are symbolic, a lot of what we do is symbolic up here, and my comments last week were just as symbolic, that's all they were. Now, at this point, and I say this to Dr. Pace while he's here, I made my point, I said what I had to say, I think those questions need to be asked, but I think now, there's no time for, you know, I'm gonna prove you guys wrong and I'm gonna, you know, this kind of stuff. I am on board 1,000% on everything that Dr. Pace has going on, what you have going on. I support this resolution, I think that, that time to ask those questions and do that has happened and it will happen later, but right now, we need to show the public that we are all in this together, all five of us and the rest of us as well, to make sure that their needs, their concerns, and their, you know, how Lake County reacts to this stuff is, is a priority for us. So, I totally support that and I want to make, make that statement as well. What, I did want to say one other thing, I think there's very few counties or jurisdictions that are more prepared to deal with anything like this than we are. The rest of the world is now dealing with what we've been dealing with since the Valley Fire started. This is not much different than that, and I think we're very, very prepared to do that, and I appreciate everything that everyone is doing to make sure that, that our county and our region is, is a priority.
Any other questions or comments?
I just had a quick question, and this is to Anita and Carol or any board member. Did I read correctly that right now the governor has relaxed the rules that we don't have to do this every 15 days or every 30 days?
That's correct.
Under the proclamation.
Does that count for the other prior emergency declarations that we have?
Yes, yes.
That's gonna be good.
That's, that is good. Excellent. Any other board members? Any public input on this item? Brian, if you could step aside there.
As a citizen who happens to be one of these people who qualifies for worrying about this, you know, I'm 73 years old, I've had prior medical problems and so forth, I'd just like to know what the status of testing is in Lake County.
We're gonna get an update on that pretty soon.
Okay. Because it's, it's one thing to say we don't have any cases, but if you don't have any testing, you don't know, really.
I don't mean to be, Ed, you don't have a cold or anything, do you? You just got up early, right?
I feel perfectly healthy and I'd be willing to dance a jig if you'd like.
Okay, just making sure.
Just because it's St. Patrick's Day.
Figured it was early, and it is St. Patrick's Day. All right, any more public input?
Thank God the bars are closed.
All right, if there's no more public input, please bring this back to the board for action.
I move to ratify.
All right.
I move to ratify.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff Martin. Thank you. All right, item 4.2, consideration of impacts of the four-week closure of local schools on the county workforce and possible direction to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll take that one. So, in light of the school closures being announced on Sunday, we did a quick email poll of departments to get a sense from department heads how departments are being impacted by that and if they're able to carry out their essential functions with, with staff absent due to the need to take care of their children who are not in school. And a majority of departments did respond to that, and a majority of departments do have staff that are needing to tend to their children, and so some are not working, many, many are juggling between spouses, grandparents, alternative work schedules and the like. The majority of departments did indicate that at this time, there's no anticipated impact on services we offer to the public, although a number of them said that they're paring down to essential core services. There were some common themes, though. In many, many cases, people are juggling, and while it may be working now, which is day two of the school closures, it's yet to be seen if it continues to work. The four-week closure is a long period of time for people to manage the care of their children while they cannot be in school. None, I think virtually none of the employees who are in that mode where they're juggling would have sufficient paid leave accruals to cover for an entire four weeks if the bottom drops out on their plan that they now have in place. An anticipated additional impact that may be forthcoming is, I know that, that the state is looking at how daycare will be managed in light of this, and if daycare, that could be a further impact for young children if they're no longer able to, to place them in daycare, so I think more to come on that. As I said, all of the juggling that's going on presently has the potential to change a lot in the entire four weeks, and I would suggest that this is a topic that we continue to consider and stay in contact with our departments. But in responding to the email poll, a number of, of department heads also noted that they have family, that employees have family members who are older workers, or, excuse me, are older people, or, or family members that are chronic, have chronic conditions that they're providing some care for, so there were also some concerns about needing to manage the needs of older people. We've also had some older employees asking about that as well. We have very recently, for the second time, provided all employees the information we have on some heightened benefits under the state disability insurance program, paid family leave for caregiving, and, and unemployment insurance, which is more readily available for people who can't work during these times. And then there is more information to come, we hope soon, about some of the federal provisions that are being talked about, such as additional paid family leave, but we just don't have enough information to know how that will translate to actual use here. So, the long and the short of it is that right now, our departments seem to be managing okay. It's something that I suggest we continue to monitor and touch base with at each meeting as more information becomes available. We also looked at our vacation donation and catastrophic compensation policy, which is presently in effect, and we may soon recommend some revisions to that policy. We haven't had time to fully draft all those revisions, but perhaps by your next agenda, so there may be an opportunity for employees who have a lot of leave available to be able to donate so others can use it. And we have also had preliminary discussions with the auditor's office about what is possible in the payroll system. If your board wanted to advance leave to employees, it is possible within execute time, but we would need some policy guidance from you in terms of how much leave you would want to allow employees to be able to advance. For instance, if you authorized employees to be advanced two weeks of, of leave and, and to pay it back as they earn it, that would take them the better part of a year to, to work, and so if the employee separated during that year, we would have to think about a way, some kind of mechanism to make the county whole if time had been advanced. So I know that's kind of a lot, and I think it's a work in progress.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, and we know that's a chance that we take. We do that when we, you know, pay for somebody's training in advance, we do that when we, you know, send somebody to, well, the same, same type of training, but post, be post-certified, you know, that type, so we do that, but the odds are with us that it won't. It's, it's, it's a loss that I'm willing to, to accept, it's not gonna be widespread, and I think, you know, that's the, the least we can do is to advance them that and then work it out at the other end if, you know, we, that's what insurance is, you know, you give somebody insurance, if they wreck their car, you probably, the insurance company's losing on that one, but they're making it on the other. So I think, you know, it's the same kind of insurance that we're, we're doing, we're offering them some level of insurance that, that comes with a, a small premium, so.
And so if there's concurrence that we should have a policy for that, we can certainly have something for your consideration for your next meeting, that and proposed revisions to the, to the donation policy.
Yeah.
I just had a quick comment, just to add to what Rob was saying. Did we think about possibly even with some folks that have children at home, allowing them to, like, work at a part-time status? I mean, these are all sorts of little options that you can do and variations to be able to help flex time or whatever, but allow them to work, like, a part-time schedule and then supplement with the, you know, PTO or whatever, in advance or something like that, you know, that would really, that would really assist some folks, because some folks they just go home, check on their kids and come back, or take a Tuesday or Thursday off, whatever the case may be.
Yeah.
Supervisor Brown?
I think all those are, you know, I think the message that we probably need to send to the employees and the department heads is that we're willing to look at options like that. I think that's, that's a good one, I think there's probably gonna be a lot of others, and as with most things, the, the best recommendations are going to come from them as opposed to us just brainstorming up here, I think.
I think in some...
Just knowing that we're open to, to some things like that are, is the direction that we should probably give today.
In some cases, extended work hours might be helpful as well if a two-parent family is juggling the care of the children, if it's possible for an employee to work a earlier or later shift to support the family in juggling. I think we should look at that.
Yeah.
Supervisor Scott?
So I appreciate that we're putting out the word to our employees for all of the options that we're aware of, and obviously we'll do the same as more options come up, but I think that we should at least maybe post that on our website so that we can help also lead the, in the county to let everybody know what's available to them, because not everybody has an HR, they might work at a small business, but they might be locked out, and just to have that knowledge that they can go to the EDD, they can get, look at unemployment, I think we need to help out in our entire community and not just our county staff, and I think that information is easily conveyed to other people.
Sure. Very good.
Yeah. So I agree with all of that, yeah, bringing back the options and the suggestions from our workers, working with department heads and other things, greatly appreciate it. You know, we're kind of in some unprecedented times here right now as we move forward, so we're not completely, we're not getting the message out there, providing as much information on the governor's proclamation on EDD, disability, family work leave for all of our businesses that are being affected right now, so, thank you very much. I do want to make one comment, too. Also, with the kids out of school, Carol, you mentioned it, you know, sending the kids to grandma and grandpas right now should be something that's kind of reconsidered. I know that's always the fallback when they're out of school, but right now, as we know, and Dr. Pace will report on this later, that, that's, that's probably not the best plan at this point until we know some more, so, try and find some other arrangements, I know that's tough, some people, that's their only fallback, but that is something to be considered, so I just want to get that.
See, my grandkids consider that punishment when they come to school. It's like they've done something bad.
That's all it is, so, okay.
Thank you.
So you've got your direction?
Yes, appreciate it. Much more to come.
All right, item 4.3, consideration of impacts of the four-week closure of local schools on the county workforce and the possi, oh, sorry about that, I read the wrong one. Consideration of proposed closure of the Lake County library branches due to COVID-19.
Thank you. I'm Christopher Veach, the county librarian. So in order to slow the spread of the coronavirus and protect patrons and staff, I am requesting that the Lake County Library close to the public from today to April 4th, 2020. Over the weekend, I was in contact with our local health officer, and he agreed that it would be prudent to close to the public during this time. While closed, we'll still have our digital resources available to patrons on our website. The due date of library materials will be extended, public Wi-Fi will remain on and be able to be accessed from our parking lot, but we will close our facilities to the public. I'm here to answer any other questions you might have.
I was gonna ask about the Wi-Fi, I'm really happy that you're saying it's gonna stay on, because right now, we have a lot of schools that are asking our children to go online to do their homework, and not everybody has the same access to online, so I think that's great, especially if they can stay in their car, that means they're, they could be right next to another car, they're still safe. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Supervisor, any...
Just a question, so do you have a plan for your employees of what they're gonna be doing during this time?
Yeah, so during this time, employees, some will stay home if they are in part of that vulnerable population, a quarter of my staff are in that vulnerable population. The others will do inventory tasks in the library, they'll do staff training, preparing for future programs and those kind of activities.
Right. Any public input? If you could come up front, please.
So, all, all library due dates are extended, so no one will be paying late fees.
But I'm gonna need you, you're gonna have to come up front, say your name.
Erin McCarrick, Clearlake, I just took my friend's kids to get a bunch of books, and so, wondering about late fees.
Yeah, so I'll just reiterate, there shouldn't be any late fees, we've extended all due dates on a rolling basis, so nothing should be due before April 14.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any more public input? All right, go and bring this back to the board for action.
Move to approve as presented? Thank you.
We've got a resolution.
Oh, offer the resolution. I don't have it here, sitting here.
Supervisor Brown offers a resolution.
There it is. Yep.
Okay.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sivagde?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
This really screwed you all up, didn't it? Goodness.
Yeah.
Aye.
Good thing it's a swivel chair.
And then Supervisor Scott?
Aye. Thank you.
Excellent.
Chris. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along to item 4.4. Supervisor Brown?
So, yeah, thank you. I, we're gonna be dealing with a lot of stuff as they come up, and this, this has come up in, in other counties, and so I thought I'd bring it back to the board for discussion, and it's, you know, it's, it's one of those slippery slope things, I get that as far as evictions and raising rents, and we're gonna have another one come up.
Next town.
Yeah, yeah, for the price gouging like we've done in the past. So, you know, I wanted to have this discussion, I think there's, there's a lot of stuff going on that are outside of everybody's controls, and I know that there are people that also need to, you know, they need to make a living, and a lot of that is their, their ability to rent out a home, you know, be able to make the payment and do all these things, but, you know, I want to have this discussion about, you know, the limitations on being able to, we, we've got enough of a homeless population as it is right now, people can't find places to rent right now, they just can't, and so throwing this into the mix is just one more problem that we need to deal with, and maybe, you know, I was hoping that we would have a discussion about, you know, how we could possibly deal with this one at this time, so, I know that it's an issue in the county, it always is an issue in the county, but particularly right now, so, open for the discussion.
Well, I think it's definitely a, a good conversation, you know, not only we're talking about evictions and commercial stuff, if we dive into this thing, the employees that are gonna be affected in this county without a payroll, they're gonna have a mortgage, you know, hopefully the federal government and the state steps in on those types of things, too, because these are things as business owners and everything, we're all, we're dealing with in these conversations on how folks, it would be great to think everybody's got a savings, but we know that's not true. We know that's absolutely not true here in Lake County, and I, I think it, absolutely anything we can do to help stave this off, one less thing for them to worry about as a family at this point. It's not gonna guarantee anything for them, but Supervisor Brown, I completely support it, and I'm glad the governor knew some, at least did something to also to address that, so.
Well, he gave us the opportunity to address it, and that, that's helpful, I mean, you know, and I, there are a lot of things going on, on a good day, that are not favorable to small businesses. Over 60% of our population in the county, we're working, working people, work for a business with 10 employees or smaller, that are privately owned, that's a substantial part. We do a lot, we talk a lot, as we should, about county employees and, and, and people that, that don't have a means, we, you know, that's what we do, we take care of them with social services, and we do this kind of thing, but little regard is given as much as, as proportionate to the workforce that's out there actually making the money to pay the taxes that pays for all of this stuff that we're dealing with, and so, you know, this is, this is part of that, so.
Supervisor Scott?
I just wanted to read a portion of it so that the public was aware, because I think this makes it real good for me. Nothing in this resolution shall relieve a tenant of the obligation to pay rent nor restrict the landlord's ability to recover rent due. I think the idea is, right now, if we're asking people to do social distancing, as we are getting handed down from the federal government to the state government, down to the local, asking people to continue with the evictions and put more people out on the street is not gonna help us in what, it's a contradiction of what we're asking. And so at this moment in time, to say, we're gonna pause, and again, they're supposed to pay rent, there's, the landlord has the ability to be whole, hopefully that'll get corrected in the future if people struggle to make their payments, but at this moment in time, I agree that this is something that we need to do.
Supervisor Scott?
You know, I also agree, I think we need to be looking at ways we can help our community. My question would be, I don't know if this is a little off-topic, but how does this affect our tax sale? I know our tax seller, people that haven't been paying for more than five years, but people are also gonna be losing their homes with the tax sale we're gonna be having.
Well, as, as I stated back when we had that discussion, I was concerned about that then, and, and I am concerned about it, I think we should move forward with the sale, I don't think this should impede that operation. I think if we come up with, you know, it's, if there may be some instances in there where we need to address that as, as, you know, as leadership here in the county to say, hey, you know, our staff recognizes there's a couple, there's people living in these homes right now that, that could possibly be out on the street, maybe we need to actually put, you know, fine tune some of that, some of those that are in that sale, but I think a lot of the properties that we're talking about are, are not occupied anyway. I, I think there's, there's just a few of them that probably are, I'm just guessing, but based on the list that I've seen, but...
And, and just don't mean to interrupt, this, this is meant to be a safeguard for the emergency we're in right now, when you have a property that's been tax defaulted for 22 years.
That's true, yeah.
That's a different situation. Granted, it could end up with the same result that somebody is taking out, but I, I think that's, we're talking about apples and oranges here.
But here's a scenario, and I appreciate Tina's view on this, because the scenario could be, it may not be, but it could be, it's likely that it is, that somebody is renting a house where the landlord has not paid the rent and it's likely to be in default, and so that would be something that I would be of concern, have, have concern with. So I think we need to address those as they come up, the sale's far enough out now where maybe, maybe it'd be moved to begin with, but I hope, I hope so, because if not, we're gonna have much bigger problems than that. So, anyway, I, I appreciate that, and I think we should look into that as well.
Okay. Any public input on this item?
I want to thank the board for taking this item up and bringing this agenda, as the, the person who has the authority to enforce evictions, I was mulling this over as well, and in fact, yesterday directed my staff to cease all evictions, so, it doesn't, to me, it doesn't make any sense to tell people self-quarantine, stay at home, but then we're gonna kick you out. I like the, the idea of keeping our businesses in mind, because people do have to make a living on renting their homes and their properties, and I haven't had an opportunity to review this yet, I just want to ask, is there a trigger to repeal or end this, is just, does this go away on order of the governor so that we will know when, because in addition to taking care of people's immediate needs, we also do need to keep into consideration those people that do rely on the income generated.
Yeah. Yeah, it's the, it's related to the governor's order, so, when that's repealed, this, this could be, and, of course, we could bring it back, too, you know, and, and do that at any time if we need to sooner.
Yes, it relates to May 31 because that was the, the governor's executive order, but it can be terminated or extended, so.
Again, I want to thank the board for being united on this, this is a decision that I made, I thought about it for quite a bit, and I'm glad I'm not gonna be the only one burdened with the responsibility of suffering whatever unknown consequences come of this, but I also, I think it has a beneficial impact for a lot of people in our community that, that shouldn't be thrown out on the streets during this emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Brown. Any other public input?
No, I'm sorry, I was just, so, before, as, as will be a lot, I'm sorry.
Any more other, any other public input on this item? Bring back the board, Supervisor Brown?
I wasn't paying attention, Anita was talking to me, so, yeah. One of the things, you know, we will be bringing other things up as they come up, there's, you know, gonna be a lot going on, and I called, I called Anita last night, I think it was about 7 o'clock, I'd been... I'd been toying with this and, and of course she was at the office.
Of course she was.
And, um, and I appreciate you getting this out and putting this thing together. It was very, very thoughtful. I, I basically just laid out a concept. She, she put it all together as far as, uh, you know, protecting me and us, so I, I think, and the public. So thank you for that.
You're very welcome. Many counties are working on this and so there are a lot of drafts out there. Supervisor Brown also pointed out to me there was a typo on page three at line seven. It's not 2018, it's 2020. By 7:30, I get hungry, I don't necessarily proof write well.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can make that adjustment. Well, well written. Rob, good job bringing this up here and getting this to the board and, um, you know, what we talked about is, uh, banks, credit unions, government-sponsored enterprise, institutional investors, all those. We're all going to be in this together here, so we're going to get through it, so. Well, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Just, I'll, I'll offer the resolution, but first to.
With amendment.
With amendment, yeah.
Amendment 2020 there?
Yeah. To go along with, uh, with Supervisor Scott's concerns, Patrick called Carol. Carol, you, why don't you go ahead and?
Yes, I, I checked with Patrick about whether or not the tax sale has the potential to make, um, homeowners homeless during this time. And his response was, um, that there are extra provisions for homeowners and anyone with that situation should contact the treasurer tax collector immediately. So if somebody's living in a home that's subject to tax sale, they should reach out to the treasurer tax collector and, um, ask for the extra protections that are available for homeowners.
Because what I'm thinking on that, maybe some people were trying to scramble and get their money together to pay their taxes, but then this happened and then that leaves them where they aren't able to do that.
That's true.
Okay.
Yep. So the resolution has been offered. With amendment, with the amendment.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Savalte?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Yep.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Approval of the consent agenda, consent agenda, consent agenda items are usually non-controversial. Are there, are there any consent agenda items that would like to be pulled from the board? Any from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda 5.1 through 5.9.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moving right along, um, we'll do a presentation of a proclamation commending Tango Mike for 17 years of support. I'll give you the wrong one. 17 years of support for military personnel and their families, presented by Rob Brown. Did we have any public input today? We'll do it right after this.
No, I don't want to give you that. No, I don't want to get you sick. So, uh, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, it's my honor to, to, uh, this, this is a big deal. This is 17 years of support for military personnel and their families by, uh, Operation Tango Mike that we're commending you for. That's a, that's a huge deal. And in spite of everything else that's going on, life goes on as well. So I appreciate you guys continuing to do this. Uh, whereas Operation Tango Mike has supported deployed military personnel throughout Operation Enduring Freedom, Operation Iraqi Freedom, Operation New Dawn, Operation Onward Liberty, Operation Inherent Resolve, and Operation Freedom Sentinel. And whereas Operation Tango Mike has shipped more than 22,000 care packages to deployed personnel and assisted multitudes of military families. And whereas Operation Tango Mike coordinates annual collection and distribution of Christmas gifts and school supplies for military families. And whereas Operation Tango Mike has coordinated and hosted many welcome home celebrations and ceremonies for returning troops. And whereas Operation Tango Mike has assisted in honoring three of Lake County fallen heroes in Global War on Terror. And whereas the Secretary of Defense has recognized families and community members as the power behind the power. Whereas Operation Tango Mike fills a crucial role in supporting family members and loved ones of our armed cer- armed forces and provides a compassionate community and incalculable moral, uh, support to families and loved ones. And whereas Operation Tango Mike will mark 17 years of unwavering support for military personnel and families on March 19th, 2020. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Lake County Board of Supervisors does hereby commend and express its gratitude to Operation Tango Mike for their commitment, dedication, and invaluable service to military personnel and their families. Passed and adopted this 17th day of March, 2020.
I just want to say that I'm really grateful to our community for keeping this going. We're all volunteer, we're nonprofit, we survive on donations and fundraiser, and I really hope that this current situation is not the end of Operation Tango Mike. We have no ability to fundraise at this point, so when this is all done and you see one of our events, please support us because the troops still need what we send. So thank you.
And there are buckets throughout our community for donations to Tango Mike. Please go ahead and fill up those buckets.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we're going to go back to 905. Is there any public input today? Any public input? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back. B, presentation of a proclamation, proclamation designating the month of March, 2020 as March for Meals Month. Do you have anybody from any of the senior centers here today?
They're probably out busy.
They're working.
Yeah, they probably are.
Crystal, would you come up and accept this proclamation?
We have AAA. AAA has up.
AAA come up, that's great.
Excellent. Today we'd like to do a Board of Supervisors proclamation designating the month of March, 2020 as March for Meals Month. Whereas over 220,000 meals are provided annually to homebound seniors in Lake County, so they may live independently in their homes for as long as possible. And whereas the loyal volunteers who prepare and deliver meals on wheels provide consistent and dependable meal delivery and daily wellness checks for the Lake County seniors in need. Whereas the senior centers and their program partners bring together the community, local business, and community organizations for the purposes of providing nutrition, hope, and independence to the homebound seniors and to those in need. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Lake hereby declare the month of March, 2020 as March for Meals Month in Lake County. And recognizes the vital role of senior centers and community volunteers in addressing the needs of seniors in Lake County. Passed and adopted this 17th day of March, 2020 and signed by the Chair of the Board of Supervisors. And here to accept this will be Crystal Marketan. Thank you very much.
I'd like to introduce, um, I'm Crystal Marketan, Director for Social Services and also Executive Director for Lake and Mendocino Area Agency on Aging. Um, with me today is Kelly Page, Program Manager for Area Agency on Aging, and Dina Eddingscreen, who is our Coordinator, um, for Area Agency on Aging. And just a big, um, thank you to the local senior centers and the work that they're doing now to help support those people who are in a, in a highly protected category for COVID-19. Meals are now being delivered instead of in congregate settings, um, and other changes, um, are being made as well. And hopefully we can continue to support this vulnerable population. Thank you.
Need a wide, wide angle to get it spread out there. No, I'm good. I, I think I'm in it.
Okay, moving right along to, uh, our 910 item, uh, consideration of an update on the coronavirus. Do we have an extra?
Good morning, everybody. I'm Gary Pace, Public Health Officer for the County of Lake. And, um, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about this again. I think the, where I wanted to start today was to basically just acknowledge the hardship that's going to be coming down for everybody. I think the, um, you know, the financial hardship, the kids being out of school, uh, everything that's going on now before we even have any cases here is just a, uh, it's, I think it's going to be challenging for everybody. And I think, I agree with Supervisor Brown that this is, um, a community that is able to deal with this, that does deal with this. The leadership's moving forward in a good way and, um, but it's, you know, this is significant and I think people are going to be struggling and really it's going to be a stressful time coming in the next little bit. We don't know how long it's going to be and hopefully it passes by us and we're kind of, uh, ramping up for something that isn't necessary. But I think, uh, you know, just to acknowledge what's going on for everybody and just how much is happening here, that anxiety about losing jobs and what's going to happen about jobs of not, not being able to get paid right now, not necessarily losing jobs at this point, but it's a, it's a, it's a, uh, sobering time. And, um, so, you know, I'm sure everybody's watching the news and it's, uh, the situation globally continues to unfold. It's, um, in the United States, we're starting to see some real rises in cases. The, um, President has made, um, called it a national emergency and starting to really ask for, uh, people to take significant, make significant disruptions in their lives. The governor came out on Sunday, did the same. Uh, the counties in the Bay Area are really, uh, clamping down and basically, uh, encouraging people to, um, shelter at home so that they are basically staying at home or, or they can go outside but not do the normal activities. Work situations are really trying to be, um, uh, dampened and people working from home, most of the schools are closed in the Bay Area. My understanding is Mendocino County now is also encouraging sheltering at home. We here in this county, uh, yesterday brought out two orders. One was the order about the closing the schools. The other is, uh, limiting groups in the area, really limiting under 25. Uh, between 25 and 100, if it's an essential group activity, it would be permissible to do it if you follow certain conditions, which are, um, the social distancing, the, uh, not, uh, keeping the vulnerable populations away and anybody sick being asked to leave. Um, so, you know, we're really, I mean, I think the way to think about this right now is we're seeing this thing exponentially move. The, uh, Dr. Fauci, who's really the, kind of the expert that's leading the charge nationally right now, says whatever you see happening, you're a week or two behind it. So what, kind of the way I'm thinking about this is watching the Bay Area and taking cues from how they're doing and trying to keep one step ahead of things. Um, and I appreciate the, the position of the board here of really taking a strong leadership role and, you know, talking about the, the eviction, the possible evictions and trying to do protections for them, talking about the workers and how to protect people for that. I mean, you know, the potential here is for a lot of disruption independent of the medical condition, so. So, I guess I just kind of wanted to start kind of walking through some of the specifics here. At this point, we still don't have any cases here. We've tested, you know, a, a couple dozen people in the county probably. The testing issues are huge, um, and it's not a county issue. So, uh, statewide and nationally, there's, there's been real problems in getting testing capacity. The tests are not done in the local hospitals. The tests are either done in regional public health hosp- uh, public health laboratories or through, uh, commercial labs like Quest and AARP. Quest is the one that, uh, Sutter uses, AARP is the one that, um, Adventist uses in Clear Lake. Yesterday, uh, I had a conversation with Adventist and they had sent some specimens to AARP and they rejected them because they don't have enough capacity to do it. They're, they're overwhelmed with demand right now, so they just said, no, we're not going to run it. So they're, we're, we're helping them find other routes. Quest does about, uh, the current capacity down in Southern California is 1,200 a week for the whole Western region. They have a currently a seven-day turnaround time, so, which is clinically, you know, a nightmare from a doctor's point of view. That's almost useless. Somebody, you, you're concerned about them having it, you put them on some kind of isolation, you don't get the results back for a week. Whatever's happened then is, is kind of unfolded. We do the public health lab locally in Santa Rosa, will run 40 tests a day for three counties, Sonoma, Mendo, and Lake. And, um, uh, but they require that people meet very specific criteria, which are essentially contact with a case or, um, um, uh, very sick, basically on a ventilator or something like that. So, I mean, the gentleman's, uh, question about testing is the, is the question we're answering all day long and, uh, there's no good answer. The President and the Governor keep saying, you know, things are getting better, their, their testing will be available and we're hoping that's true. Supposedly the commercial labs are going to ramp up. The public health labs are where they're at, that's all they're going to have the capacity for. And speaking of which, you all wrote a letter a couple of weeks ago, um, asking for supporting the Sonoma County Public Health Lab, and this is exactly why that was for, so I really appreciate you being willing to do that. The, uh, we are trying to get some surveillance in the community, which means testing just in the community, because the point that was made earlier is absolutely right. How do we know how many, how do we know it's not here if we have only tested 20 people? We don't know for sure. I mean, we have not seen a surge in illnesses or things that would make us concerned about that and, um, but it's certainly possible. They started, they did do a little bit of surveillance in Marin and in Sonoma and they picked up cases in both of those times. So it's probably, I wouldn't be at all surprised if it's in the community, I guess is the point. We are trying to get some testing kits for the, the testing capability for the, um, community, for surveillance. And, uh, we're in communication with the, the county, the regional lab at this point and, um, they're, you know, they're just having trouble getting enough capacity. The, uh, uh, OES now has said that they may be able to help us start setting up some kind of drive-through testing. It's still, we're still very early in that conversation. The Governor, basically on Sunday, he said that they've made some arrangements now to start this drive-by testing strategy. And there's going to be two sites that they're starting, one San Mateo County, one Santa Clara County, which are the hotbeds of the, of the outbreak right now in this area. And so we're, we're actively working on that as well. The testing is, from a clinical point of view and from an outbreak management point of view, is the, is the biggest problem and it's a big problem everywhere, so. And there is, just for people to know, or if you get questions and, and you want to know how, a good way to answer it, there is a press release that went out on Friday that tries to outline this in some kind of way that people can understand. Very confusing, changing every day. And, um, you know, so hopefully next week I'll have some good news and we can say that actually they've been able to expand the capacity. But, um, Quest just started doing it last Monday, AARP just started doing it like Thursday. So, you know, they're just in the process of ramping this whole thing up. The, uh, we're, um, in communication with the healthcare partners, both hospitals, the, the, some of the major clinics, the nursing facilities. They're all doing good work, progressive work, staying in communication with the, uh, the state and with their regulatory agencies, et cetera, et cetera. Visiting has been sharply reduced or limited completely. Uh, the more that limiting, the more that visiting is stopped, the better, I think. The, uh, hospitals pretty much have gotten to where it's, uh, for people at the end of life can get visitors or, and they limit to one at a time. And the nursing facilities, I believe all three of them now, the skilled nursing facilities have completely limited, um, eliminated, uh, visiting at this point, which is a, you know, a real hardship for families. And the, a lot of the folks in those places don't understand what's going on, how come nobody's coming anymore? And, um, but it's, those people are by far the most vulnerable. If you watch the situation up outside of Seattle with the nursing facility up there, there's, I don't know, there's 10 deaths or something in that place now, they're on lockdown. It's really, really harsh. The, uh, they're also, the, the, the hospitals are really, um, my biggest concern. The, they're also, the hospitals are really my biggest concern. So, when I think about this, kind of the big picture way I'm thinking about this is we are in this position where we don't have any cases that we're aware of. There may be some community spread, but it hasn't really shown its head yet. We're in this somewhat isolated community, although people do commute back and forth. There are, there is some tourism that comes in. But, you know, in terms of like Marin County, they're a lot more porous. The longer we can hold the infection out, the longer we can minimize the spread, the better we're going to be. Our healthcare facilities are vulnerable, you know. It's a, we have a total of eight ventilators in the county and that's really the lifesaving mechanism is the ventilators. And, you know, we have 65,000 people. So, when people, it's a respiratory illness, when people, not, most people don't get this really critically ill, but when they do, it's respiratory, so they can't breathe. And the thing that will allow them to survive is a ventilator at that time. We only have eight. And when people are sick, they often are on them for a couple of weeks. So, to me, what our, my whole public health strategy here are, the strategy of our public health facility, department is really trying to slow this down before it gets in so that we can at least, if there is, if it does get in and it's starting to move through, that it's in a manageable level and the, and the local health facilities don't get overwhelmed. The other weak point here is the, is the medical healthcare worker resource. At Adventist, I believe, you know, most of the docs are over 60. The, you know, we're always having kind of challenges getting enough staffing. People are really dedicated and that we've got really good folks here. But, you know, if a couple of them go out sick, it, it's a huge hit. So, we're, the healthcare facilities now are working on ways to protect them, you know. Tele, trying to set up, they're basically limiting non-essential surgeries. So elective surgeries are being postponed, well care visits are being postponed. They're both working on trying to see if there's some way to do some telemedicine for, so that for non-acute visits where the doctor can be not in contact with the patients so that, you know, there's less, less risk of passing infection along like that. But these are some of the things that are being talked about and, you know, again, I think all the healthcare facilities that I've been talking with have been very progressive and very forward-thinking and thinking in a really good way about all this. The schools are closed for, I think it's four weeks total at this point, with one, one of those weeks was a spring break. And we'll, you know, hopefully at the end of four weeks, they can open back up. A lot of the universities around the country have closed for the rest of the year. And I, in my mind, I think people ought to, it's great to think two to four weeks. I think probably we'll see how it goes, but if you look at some of the other countries, it's more a couple of months. And so, I think in terms of planning and in terms of how to, how to try to support folks, it's, I think that's sort of the way I would encourage people to think about it. And if we get lucky and it's shorter, that's great, you know. But it's, you know, you all are in a position of planning and trying to really figure out how to take care of people. And I think it's going to be, it's probably worth it to think longer term rather than shorter term. The vulnerable groups are, you know, this is what keeps me up at night, the seniors, the homeless folks, the people in the jail. These are the people, if it gets into the jail and starts ripping through there, it's going to be really hard to isolate people and to keep them separated, you know. Social distancing in the jails, I don't know, it doesn't even make any sense. So, we're, we're meeting with them, I'm trying to meet with them later this morning and we're really talking about, you know, how can they isolate, how they're screening. They've stopped visitation now, the, you know, the sheriff and the captain are thinking about all this in a very good progressive way, in a way of taking care of their, the folks that they're, they're responsible for. But, you know, it's, it's challenging, there's no good, and we don't have the testing. So, if somebody comes in with symptoms, we can't even test them and say, oh yeah, he does have it, or oh no, he doesn't have it, he can go back out in the general population. The, so, the workplace issues, which, you know, Carol and Anita were talking about are tremendous. And a lot of places are really going to telecommuting and we had some discussion about that, about how to work remotely and if there are county policies for that. And I would really encourage us to at least, you know, certainly a lot of departments won't be able to do it, but I think what's probably, what could start happening is people start not being able to come in because their kids are not in school, they're, they're ill, they're different things. But if they had some way to do some work from home, they might be able to keep things going, you know. I think part of it is, is going to be sort of having these contingency plans. Like, I'm kind of thinking about it like, there's kind of three goals for me right now. One is preventing the entrance of the, of the infection or slowing it all down so that we don't get the surge. The second is really supporting the clinical people to take care of people here with trying to get the testing and trying to work on the clinical support things. And then the third is, is how to plan for if things get worse. And if they don't get worse, we're good. But if they do start getting worse, the work we do now is going to be what, what helps, helps that down the way. So, the workplace questions are just, all the stuff you all were talking about, I think is, is perfect. It's, you know, trying to think through this, how to support people when they can't come in and that, but I think the other piece of it is, is if there's any kind of remote capabilities that can be set up even for some of the people in there to do some of their tasks, it's probably going to be good in the long run. So, you know, I guess I'll probably close and then we can, there are probably going to be some questions. I think probably we, the, my thinking is, I'm sort of thinking the next step, the next two steps. And again, hopefully it doesn't, they aren't necessary, but, you know, I think probably the next step would be seeing what's going on down in the Bay Area. And if, so if things continue to unfold, that'll probably be the next thing we do. Because again, the whole strategy here is the less intermingling of people there is, the less likely things are to spread. So, if, like, if you can stay at home with your family without a lot of in and out going on, that's ideal. The problem is, is like the schools where people are coming from a lot of different places, they go in, they, they intermingle for a while and then they go back out to other places. That's how it spreads in a community. The places, if you look at the experience over in Asia and Europe, is that they, it's been, the places that have been the most successful have been the ones that have been the strongest in kind of putting a blanket on social interaction and that have also been really good about testing and getting people away, getting sick people away from the well people. So, putting them in quarantine tents and things like that rather than sending them home if they were sick, because if you send them home, then everybody in the family gets sick. So, those are the, seem to be the two components that work. Once it's moving in the community a lot, like it is in Italy right now, there's not a whole lot you can do. And especially in a kind of a resource, kind of scarce area in terms of the medical resources here, if things start getting in that sort of situation, there's not, we could be stuck. And so, really trying to take a strong preventive approach here. And I appreciate that, you know, you all have been really good about that. And everybody I've talked with in the community, from the nonprofits to the different agencies, have all been really willing and able to go along like that. So, that's probably all for now. And so, happy to answer any questions or however you want to do this.
Supervisor Brown?
So, thank you, Dr. Pace, for, for the update. So, give us, give us the numbers locally, just regionally.
Well, the numbers in Lake County, no, no cases probably.
Okay, regionally being.
Regionally, what I have, the California is 369 cases that have been identified, six deaths.
As of this morning, it's 11.
11 deaths this morning.
11, okay.
Yeah, so.
And how many cases, how many cases as of this morning?
I forget that number, but I know it almost doubled overnight.
Okay, yeah, because that was from last night.
So, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but what, here's, here's what my line of thinking is. You know, I would have been the first one probably to be reluctant to do any, you know, major lockdowns and all that other kind of stuff. But the fact that things are out of our control, when the Bay Area shuts down, the people come to Lake County or they come, you know, they come someplace where they're not going to be locked down. And so, that's the concern I have, is not so much, you know, Lake County being locked down within itself, but lock, locking down to keep people from coming in to influencing us, that's the problem. And I don't know how you do that, but at some point, you know, we need to, we need to have that discussion because that happens. And we're, you know, like you say, we're a week behind or two weeks behind, whatever. Well, that's, you know, we've experienced that before, we know what that's like. But when they, when they push their hand like that and basically tell people, you know, we're locking you down here, and people are like, well, I'm getting the hell out of here then, I'm going to go to Lake County or wherever, that's the concern I have. So, what, you know, what can we do to avoid, avoid that? And I see Sheriff, maybe, may have some thoughts on that. He's standing, he's standing behind you, so, so, maybe we, maybe we can kind of kick this around a little bit here.
Well, there's wipes right there, so if you want to wipe it down and you can wipe the mic too.
I don't play on licking the mic, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's, that's a serious.
And I'm not sure that the filter.
Never hurts.
Very good point, Supervisor Brown. What happens, because I saw that happening this morning when I was leaving for work. I saw people that normally have vacation homes in my neighborhood showing up, presumably from the Bay Area, because I don't see them except during the, of the holiday season. So, that is already happening. What I would ask is that before we make such a decision, that there is increased discussion such as this, I don't know if this is the forum to do that, but it's going to have, I mean, it's, it's had a tremendous impact in the Bay Area.
I don't believe this is the place to resolve it, but I believe this is the place to bring up the issue and then you, greater minds that can figure out, you know, come back with a recommendation or whatever, I'm open to anything. But again, you know, we're, we're having to make decisions because of the decisions of others and that's, that's where we are.
And I, I think that's exactly what happened is in the Bay Area, I don't know if they had that, this type of consultation amongst all the stakeholders. So, all I would ask is that there is some consultation, if we're going to take a step as drastic as that, not only with myself, but with every, every stakeholder in the community that is going to be impacted, which is, is going to be everybody. It's going to have a tremendous impact on all kinds of operations.
Well, and I, you know, thank you for that. I, I just, I'm open to it, I want to look at it because of that. But I mean, we're, we have to make some decisions, well, we're going to be making decisions on how we have our board meetings from now. You know, there are items that are on today's agenda that were scheduled a long time before this. I've asked that at least one of them be pulled off and maybe there's, I was looking at, there's probably a bunch of them that should have been pulled off. They don't need to be dealt with. And we need to minimize, you know, there's, half this room is here right now that didn't need to be here because we could have pulled, pulled this stuff off. And that's, I'm not, that's not a criticism of anybody other than, it's just an observation of what I think is, what we're leading to. And I think we really need to be, you know, absolutely a minimum to step. Same thing, you know, when we're having this discussion about leave time and all that. When we leave here, there should be a meeting of the minds somewhere of, we've had this discussion before, non-essential government operations. You know, if, if it doesn't need to happen, don't, it doesn't need to happen for right now. So, the courts are closing down, that's a pretty substantial act that's, that you don't, that you, you don't see. You know, in the times of a local disaster, we see it, but widespread as it is right now, if the courts don't need to operate, I'm pretty sure we don't. So, very, very minimally. So, you know, we need to start having those discussions too, I guess. And that, did you have anything else on that?
I do, as part of the discussions, would you like, I'm prepared to give a briefing on what the impacts are in my department and amongst law enforcement, kind of generally in the county. Let's see, what time, are we going to take a break soon or should we roll through till 11 or so?
I don't.
Okay. So, these issues seem to be changing almost on an hourly basis. We heard the stats changed this overnight on the amount of deaths, so we're literally getting information that's coming in every hour. At my department, we've implemented twice daily meetings to discuss what's happened since the last meeting and quite frequently, there's been a lot. We have produced an ops plan that I discussed last week that we published on our website. So, we're, as much as we can, that's, doesn't compromise our security or providing sensible, sensitive or operational information. We're updating our operational plan on the website so people can go in there and see what kind of some of the responses that we're taking. All of our staff members are issued personal protective equipment and we've expanded that to include our office staff because they're quite frequently, frequently in contact with the public. We got with the Chief Sepeda from Lake County Fire Protection Districts and he provided some, trained the trainer for N95 fit testing for all of our employees. So, we now have six staff members that can administer fit testing. Our goal is by the end of the week to be in compliance with all the OSHA regulations regarding the N95 masks. At the jail, we've eliminated all non-essential visitation and programs. This means that only family and legal visits are allowed and everybody that enters the facility is to be screened. That includes staff. I've given the directive that if I go out there, they better ask me the screening questions about, you know, being sick, having a cough, having a fever, those types of things. And people that are answering the affirmative are denied entry into the facility. As Dr. Pace said, if the coronavirus gets into the jail facility, it's going to be very, very problematic for us. We've discontinued the use of all of our volunteers. The vast majority of our volunteers fit in that vulnerable age population, so we, we don't want to put them in an environment where they're put at additional risk. So, some of the programs that we've been administering through the use of volunteers are not going to be occurring. Let's see, we are conducting enhanced cleanings at all of our facilities. This includes the, the issuance of, I guess they're called pressure sprays, almost like weed sprayers that you have with a peroxide solution at the jail. So, if we have any inmates and we have a couple that have exhibited some flu-like symptoms, we've segregated them. And when they're moved from a facility or a cell into another, the cell is sterilized, sealed off for an hour while the peroxide solution's allowed to work. So, we're engaging to help, and we're actually having some, some positive feedback from the inmates on keeping the surfaces clean in there. As Supervisor Brown mentioned before, we received word this morning that the courts will be closing until April 1st. That's going to provide a tremendous amount of relief for us, that'll free up our transport personnel. They're going to be doing some constitutionally required things, arraignments, mandatory, some mandatory appearances. But that's really going to help us with our staffing levels and possibly free up some bailiffs and other deputy sheriffs to help us in other areas. And we're working through the process on where to, to dispatch them. In our patrol division, we're no longer responding to calls that don't require an in-person appearance. So, we're directing people to make any reports that can be taken over the phone to do so. We're also letting the public know, and I want to emphasize that here, that this is just as much to protect the public from us because we're not immune from this. You know, this coronavirus doesn't care who you are, what you do, what your socioeconomic status is. We're, if there is a case going around here, it could very well be with one of the, the members of government work, including deputy sheriff. So, we want to protect the public from us in case one of us happen to be carrying it. We also want to make sure that our workforce remains as safe as possible. The DMV has issued guidelines on suspending the enforcement of driver's licenses and registration. So, we've notified our staff to no longer enforce expired driver's licenses, expired registration for, I don't remember what the time is, but it's for a certain amount of time until the DMV opens back up and starts that program up. We had talked about the suspension of evictions. In talking about what we do if the coronavirus gets into our facility, other counties are already in the process of looking at ways of release, releasing people, furlough programs, home detention programs, those types of things. So, we're going to be looking into that and seeing if there's a way to relieve some of the, the population out there. Maybe we have some people in there that, that can serve their sentence at a later date. We're really restricting the amount of people that are allowed into the facility. We're no longer accepting anybody into custody for a booking unless it's a felony or if it's a violation of a domestic violence restraining order or a domestic violence incident. At the OES building, we've shut off the OES building and the EOC except for essential county government staff. We've been offering up the classroom for CERT training. The CERT training's been discontinued until this thing blows over and we're conducting enhanced daily cleaning out there. So, the only public access that is allowable now is for people who need to register the, with the registration program. Looking at the impact of our staff, so I know we discussed this earlier and the CAO asked for feedback, our feedback, exactly what the CAO said, we don't know what the impact's going to be right now, the impacts are minimal. We only have a couple of people that are having issues with childcare and it's not having much of an impact. But if this continues, that might be something we're going to have to come back and look at again. A benefit of this, with the schools closing, we now have two school resource officers. We've reassigned one to patrol. The other one happens to be trained in dispatch where we have a, an ongoing shortage of dispatchers. So, she's able to go in there and provide some relief for the dispatchers and give them a needed break in there. We also have two, four deputy sheriff trainees in the academy up at College of the Siskus in Weed, California. We were notified yesterday that they would be closing. Today, they're packing up their belongings and traveling home and they'll be deployed out to help in areas in the facility as well as in our evidence section to relieve the, the burden that's caused by not having volunteers and not having adequate staffing at the jail.
So, they can leave Weed to come down and help us with?
They leave Weed to help us weed, weed out the problems, yes. What are we going to do when you're out here, it's not going to be the comedy hour anymore. anymore.
Well, I noticed no one laughed but you and I.
Yeah. They're still waking up, I think. Um, I, I put everybody to sleep by droning on and I'm almost done. Our dispatch center by virtue of the layout already has social distancing in place. You've all been up there and you see how they're, they're set up out there and each dispatcher has their own headset and they clean up their own workstation. Um, the additional measure that we've implemented out there is to, um, prohibit any entry to the facility unless they're, it's necessary for official business. Every once in a while we'd have, um, deputy sheriffs or police officers stop in and maybe bring a cup of coffee. We're not allowing that until this blows over and then they can have their coffee. Any questions?
Supervisor Brown.
I, um, I really appreciate what you're doing for your staff. As I've stated so many times, my, you know, my other life allows me interaction with your jail staff always and I always am concerned about them, um, seeing what they do and the general public doesn't and fortunately probably never will. But the reality is they're the highest risk of, of any, um, government employees that I'm aware of that out there. And so taking the precautions that you're taking are, are justified and if there's anything that, that we can do to further that, I, I'm open to that as well. They, um, you know, they're stuck in there indoors with, with a population that's also highly vulnerable and, um, I, I just want to make sure that they, they know that we're, we're under any consideration that we can do to protect them.
Thank you.
I just want to, I, I do want to commend you and Dr. Pace. And the reason I want to do that is because as you, as many of you noticed, I wasn't here last week. My mother is, my mother-in-law is at end of life and, uh, we've been dealing with that, um, in the Bay Area. Um, and pre, and pre this whole situation, they have already take measures for patients to take care of them and make sure they aren't infected or anything like that. Um, as, as my mother-in-law's, um, health decreases, she's been taken to the hospital and tested and it shows that they've done everything to, to keep her safe. The reason I bring this up is because down, I've been down there and I'm seeing the craze and I'm seeing everything, but I, everything that you two have done so far and this board has done has been steps that I think the Bay Area should have took, should have taken initially. So us doing that just creates a vigilance that we need to have to make sure it doesn't spread here. And so, um, I, I just, I wanted to mention that and thank you, you two gentlemen for doing that. I know for me, I take it very seriously, um, and, and I know that, uh, that you all do too, but, um, I just wanted to mention that, so.
Thank you Supervisor Brown.
So I had a couple of questions. Um, one of them is you stated the importance of keeping your officers safe and Supervisor Brown echoed that sentiment. Uh, to me, it's public healthcare and, um, law enforcement. Uh, those are the two things that if we start to see them having to go find a bed in a hospital, there's some other problems that we're going to have to deal with. Is there a priority to be able to test public healthcare of, um, uh, workers and law enforcement to make sure that we can quarantine them prior to going out into the public again? Because we're, we're relying on them on so many things and yet we're, we're absolutely blind as to what is truly happening and, uh, to protect their office so it doesn't spread within their office and their peers and to protect the public. Uh, is there a, a way to prioritize that or is it already prioritized? I mean, the Utah Jazz seems to have been prioritized and that really bothers me, but at the same time, I'm not feeling like we're really looking at who, who's the boots on the ground that really is helping our communities continue to function.
Right. So, well, there's not really testing for asymptomatic people, whether they're healthcare workers or law enforcement or anything, but if, if somebody got symptomatic in one of these high, uh, need, high risk areas, then we would probably be able to get them tested. So, you know, there, there's, there's kind of ways around, but that the CDC has acknowledged there's some special exceptions, which would be, say, somebody at the jail, uh, was needing to be tested because if he's working at the jail and if he's got it, he's going to be spreading it to all these people, right? And that are the, so if, uh, workers that are in these areas that are particularly sensitive in terms of risk of contagion is really the way that, that public health people think about it, we should be able to get those tested. The problem is, is that the messaging that's coming down from above is that, you know, American citizens should be able to get tested. This is the greatest healthcare system in the world, et cetera. And, but when people have some symptoms and they get nervous, understandably so in this current environment, they go to ask to get tested and it's, it's just not available. So that's, that's the disconnect that we keep, you know, a week ago, I think I probably said the same thing, that they say it's going to get better and it's not really much better now. But for these kind of special circumstances, we can usually get it in through the health, the health department lab down in Santa Rosa.
Cause I, I'd like to see something a little bit more proactive if we can fight for that, if we can try to get it. And I know that, that we've spoken about the, uh, test kit situation, um, the reagent that seems to be missing from allowing the test kits to be usable. Uh, is that this week that they're coming in? Have they already arrived? And I know you don't have the labs, so you may not.
Yeah. So again, this is not here, I mean, we're, I'm in discussion with the lab folks. There's two issues right now in terms of, um, kind of materials. One's the swabs from the, the specimen swabs, the other is the reagent that the labs use to process it. What has been the bottleneck up until this point is just sheer ability of the labs to ramp up a test that they'd never done before to doing thousands and, and per day. You know, they just haven't had the trained staff and the kind of the industrial capability to do that. Uh, now they're running into some, some shortages and, uh, you know, and I think we're just going to be, this is going to be an ongoing issue with, with protective equipment, with different kinds of things as the supply chains get disrupted. And so we're going to just have to keep working these step by step, just like we've had to do during the fires, you know?
And you, you said, uh, high-risk area. So I know PG&E has like tier one, tier two, tier three for fire risk. Is there similar types of mapping that's being done? Cause I'm looking at our median age and we are 45.8, but we're surrounded by counties that are in their thirties on average age. And so since we know this has a higher potential of fatality for elderly people, that we seem to be a higher risk, does that put us in a better position to get the care that we need or the proactive testing that we might need? Does that change anything at all?
So the, the, when I was mentioning the high-risk testing, I meant for individuals in high-risk occupations or, or, uh, certain kind of risk categories. The, uh, from the, um, if you want to do like the geography risk or the demographic risk, we're actually, you know, we're, we're all the, where all the energy's going right now is San Mateo, Santa Clara, down in there. They've got, you know, dozens of cases and it's in the community and their healthcare workers are starting to get sick and their systems are starting to really feel it. And, um, uh, we are still in this, you know, I think partly because of the geography and partly because of how we've been trying to manage it here, we're still reasonably protected. Now, you know, the, the curve could go bad fast and, uh, and then, you know, we have, just like with the fire disasters, we have these, um, uh, capacities to ask for regional help, to ask for statewide help through the Mohawk program and all that, which is what we've seen through the EOCs before. And the state has been responding at this point, um, to, to the, but to Santa Clara, San Mateo, those kind of places. So, you know, there are, um, processes in place to respond when things get going. You were really asking about the prevention part and that's pretty much on us. And then the diagnostic testing, I'm doing what I know how to do and I know you're helping too, which I appreciate. And, uh, we're, um, but it's, it's a problem all around.
Do, do we have the capability to do reverse testing where we kind of knock off the things that might have those same symptoms and we can actually test those in-house? And if you don't test for those things, then maybe that's probability increases that this may be what you have rather than waiting for the one specific test that we can't seem to access?
That's the right way to think. Yeah, exactly. So the, the protocol is if somebody comes in, somebody comes into the ER with fever, cough, shortness of breath, which is the sort of the symptom picture that we're talking about, usually what they're going to do is do a rapid flu test. If that's negative, then the next test is called RSV, respiratory syncytial virus. They do that test. If that one's negative, then you're considered at, uh, a possibility of coronavirus. There is another test that's quite expensive, a couple thousand dollars. It's another swab that can be done within a couple hours. It has to go up to Willetts, um, and, uh, that covers some other things, but not coronavirus. So, you know, yeah, there is a stepwise process. And again, in any kind of reasonable clinical world with other things that we do in this country and a doctor sort of thought process, these tests would be available. We would have a picture of who should be tested and who shouldn't be tested and we would be using them much more liberally. But it's been, and in other countries around the world, they've been able to move up a lot faster. This, this has been an issue on the federal level really here. And now they basically decided they couldn't really manage it and so they threw it to the commercial labs and they're doing as fast as they can. They're doing to, what they can to get up to speed because, um, but, you know, we're just going to, as I think it's going to be, you know, probably by the end of this week, probably next week, we'll see more and more capability. And then, then it's, then, then that's not going to be the issue. Then it's going to be what we do with the positive tests.
And my last comment is I, I don't envy yours or Director Pomeroy's position and we're looking to you for the professional advice on how to deal with a medical issue so large as, uh, as this is. Um, and you're, you're making decisions that are quite difficult, but you're being very responsive and, uh, you're acting professionally and I appreciate what it is that you're doing and I thank you for the work that you've done already.
Thank you. We've got a great team and Denise is great.
Supervisor Scott.
Just like to thank Dr. Pace and the sheriff for all the precautions that were put into place. I think we definitely have to make sure that we are doing this because we have a, a lack of testing and as you said, we don't even know really if this virus is in our community. And I think we're going to see more people from the Bay Area showing up in Lake County as the sheriff has said, because I know for myself, my daughter goes to San Jose State and she's moving home tomorrow because everything's closing down there. So we're going to see, you know, kids coming home also. Um, I think as a government, we need to be looking at our non-essential, um, government jobs. Do we really need to have, um, our employees facing the public if they really don't need to? If it's not something essential that needs to happen, I think we need to be making sure we're protecting, um, our employees. I think we need to be looking at that. And also to the public, if you need to go out and get items at the grocery store or, don't take our whole family. I'm still seeing that. It's, it's not an outing. Send one person out to get what you need, um, for your family. Don't, um, don't take your kids. I know my kids keep asking me, what are we doing today? And I keep telling them, nothing. You're staying home. You're, we're gonna, read, we're gonna, we're gonna stay home. We, we're not going anywhere. But I'm still seeing kids out and about, um, you know, in groups. So we have to make sure we're, um, protecting our families to protect our communities.
Supervisor Brown.
So, um, you said, you made a comment earlier about healthcare workers getting sick. And so if we're only at 450, where are they getting sick from? Because is it just them that are getting sick or the general popular? I mean, that 450 is a lot, but that's not, I mean, if, if we're getting, healthcare workers getting sick because they are vulnerable, they're, they're, you know, subjected to people that are sick, but are they getting sick from other things?
Well, I think the way to, to think about this is that 450 is probably a fraction of the real cases out there. Um, I think the, you know, maybe I misspoke, uh, cause down in the Bay Area, they are starting to get worried about this. Um, in other areas, you know, Seattle, there's a, there's a report of two ER docs that are in intensive care now, but they're not from the Bay Area, they're from other parts around the country. So, you know, it's probably, uh, uh, again, it's, at this point, I'm more thinking about how to identify the, we, the vulnerable spots and how to try to prepare for problems that might come down the road. And so, um, uh, so I, I don't, I don't have data on how many healthcare workers there are in the Bay Area.
Because that, you know, they are going to be the ones that are going to be the closest to it on, on the ground. So, um, I'm, I'm just curious about that, that comment. So, okay.
Okay.
One thing I also want to touch on is we're talking about mutual aid and the state responding. Uh, we saw the benefits of mutual aid during a lot of the last disasters. Um, with the Valley fire, we saw a little bit of delay in mutual aid because they had the, uh, the Butte fire going on down in, I think it was Calaveras County and there was a little bit of delay. One thing to keep in mind with mutual aid, we're asking for the state for help, whether it's going to be, um, if it's housing for people that are a vulnerable population such as homeless, or if we want to set up quarantine shelters, is that we're dealing with the situation that isn't just affecting Lake County. So when we make that call, there's going to be 57 other counties that are going to make some similar calls. So I think that's important to keep in mind when we make any kind of decision, that we need to be prepared to handle things locally here and not bite off more than we can chew and make, make promises to the public that we can't possibly keep. Get those expectations managed. Um, let's look at some of the ways we can do that. If we're going to reduce our workforce, maybe they can be allocated to other places to help in any kind of response that we have. Uh, but simply saying, we're going to ask the state for help and expect a, a battalion of state workers to come in and here and help us get through it, I don't think that's a reality. So I want that to be on everybody's mind.
No, that's a, that's a good point. And the, the reality of, of widespread testing, even if they had the ability to do that, the, the, the people that that would take to test everybody, I mean, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but it's a reality that there's a little hypochondria go, that goes on throughout our society when you have an entire media representation of if you're experiencing this symptom, that symptom, that symptom, that you might have this, this or this, you need to call your doctor and tell them that you need to be prescribed this, this and this. There's an entire industry on that because of that mindset, like, oh, I think I have that, you know? So everybody's going to rush in and want to get tested. That's, that's understandable. We don't have the ability to do that. And so there has to be some triage to that as well.
Dr. Pace, I just wanted to bring up another question.
Supervisor Randall.
You mentioned ventilators, eight ventilators in the county? And, um, if, uh, is there a process in case something does take place to get more? And if so, if not, if we can't, CPAP machines, those are used in essence like ventilators for sleep apnea. Could that be another option? I mean, I'm just getting ahead of the ball in essence.
So, um, the, uh, I don't know if you saw on the national news yesterday that there was a whole thing where the president basically suggested to the governors that they needed to figure out where to get them. So it's not even like, you know, typically what we do is we think we go to the state and then we go to the national stockpile and, but now the, so I don't know what to make of that. You know, the problem is, is even if we got the equipment, there's trained staff, there's special settings, it's, it's a very complex thing to get more ventilators. And so I think we're probably where we're at, you know? If, if there becomes a situation where we need a bunch of, uh, more hospital beds, like there's limitations in terms of hospital beds, but, you know, both hospitals have tents, they're, they're, they're thinking through this ways to what we call surge, deal with the surge that comes in. So, um, staff is going to be a big limitation. The ventilators are going to be, you know, you can't do those in a tent. The CPAP question is they're, they're kind of different things. But, you know, uh, what could happen is that we try to manage people that would do better on event, off event with oxygen or other kinds of, uh, respiratory support and, you know, hopefully it works. But it's, the other answer to the question is, is that with any of these kind of things, like the way the hospitals here, the way the whole business model is set up here is these are critical access hospitals. So these are, the, both these hospitals here are, are pretty much designed to get people situated if they have, uh, they don't need a lot of specialty care, they can stay here. If they're going to be in, in hospital for a long time or need a higher level of care that require more specialists and more complex equipment, they get shipped out. The, as, uh, the sheriff was mentioning, you know, it's the same thing here. We may be able to do that, but if the Bay Area is the most impacted, maybe we go up to Redding or, um, uh, those kind of places or, you know, uh, these are all new, the pathways we go are down to the Bay Area.
Well, I bring this up because, you know, most people that are staying home and are, you know, self-sheltering and whatnot, hopefully they're dialed in here. This is why I ask, so they can hear from a local, you know, source that, the questions that we're answering and their concerns. But there, a lot of people are watching the worldly news and they're getting in a panic because of what's happening in New York or somewhere else. And so I wanted to be able to ask questions that people can actually be able to dial in and be like, okay, wait, I don't need to be as scared. Of course, let's always be vigilant, but just to hear from this level and certain questions are coming to us. I'm sure everyone's getting these emails and calls about things like CPAP machines and whatnot, so.
And one other point that I want to bring up is we're starting to have discussions now about how to coordinate volunteers and, you know, because if we, say we go to get these drive-by testings, you know, we don't have enough staff for that and the hospitals are busy. So we could maybe put a nurse out and get some law enforcement out and then try to bring in some sort of working with the nonprofit community and with volunteers. But, you know, we, we want to try to get these operations set up beforehand so that we're ready to flip the switch when things come down, like what happens when the fires are.
We're talking about, you know, letting people use PTO time or they won't be having extra work, but you know, me coming from the military, we had extra duties, maybe if some people do want work and can do things, we can, you know, kind of adjust their, you know, their work, their work tasks to do things like that if need be. You know, I'm just thinking of ways to get ahead of it, that's all. Thank you.
I did have one other question of.
I think everybody's got more questions.
Okay, I didn't.
My only question is, I know we have a live feed going, is somebody watching the questions? Anybody asking questions on that live feed so we can answer those?
We don't have a live feed.
Depending on your direction later in the meeting, I think we'll have significantly more options for tele.
Telework.
Well, no, well, I mean for the telework of these meetings even. So we, we're not fully functional today with that.
Okay. Denise, did you have something?
Yeah, good morning Board. Denise Pomeroy, Health Director for the Health Department. First, I want to thank all of your Board for the support and of course, Dr. Pace and Sheriff Martin. The Public Health, Health Department's DOC, Department of Operations Center has been open for a little over two weeks. We have a core team of our emergency preparedness and nursing staff along with leadership running that department. I do want to remind the public that we've set up an email for questions and concerns. We are really trying to streamline our communication to prevent staff burnout and overexhaustion and duplication of work. So that email is M H O A C at lakecountyca.gov. All questions or concerns relating to the Health Department regarding COVID-19, please send it to that email. In addition, if you have our other emails, please don't send it to me and to Doctor and to the Mohawk. Just send it to the Mohawk. We will triage all the questions and we will get them to the right people, whether it's the medical team, the logistics team, or just information. So we also are upping our website. We will have Q and A out there available today in both English and Spanish. We're starting to track and document routine questions that we're receiving and we're putting up not only the CDC answers, but the local health department's answers. So that'll be out there today. The after hours.
Denise, would it be beneficial to have Johanna go to your website and show things while you're talking or is that information up there yet or is that email address up there?
The email address is up there.
So Johanna, can you go into the County of Lake page and pull up the Health Department? And let's see if we can't show this to the public, because the email address, it's always hard to catch those.
So actually, could we pause and go all the way up? Right here, I would really like to see something that just says coronavirus information. You have to scroll down three full screens before, you have to find where Public Health is. To me, it's the biggest question people have on their minds. And I think it needs to be at the very top of this website so people can find it easily rather than have to search for it.
That's an easy fix. Matthew or Shane, we don't have that on our front page yet? Okay, that will be fixed today.
So my.
Could you give me the light so the camera can?
My analyst is currently off this week, so I've been working with Shane's web person to try to get this up and running a little better. We're really, it's Public Health. We're really trying to make it more user-friendly and we'll be finishing up a lot of that today.
Boy, it's doing a weird thing. I thought, it looked like you were there a minute ago, Johanna. You had something that had COVID on it, so maybe you just go back a few screens.
Those are the press releases that are on the media highlights at the bottom?
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, you have to go up to the department, go to Public Health, and then there's a button for coronavirus.
It did some weird cycling thing for her, so. There you go. Yeah, I don't know what that's about.
There's a lot of clicks to get into it, so I would like it to be a little more streamlined.
But if you just punch in right on the internet, public, Lake County Public Health.
Yes, it's, yeah.
And then you can scroll down. I mean, I've been sending emails back to folks, so if they've been asking questions, hey, type in Lake County Public Health. Boom, and then you scroll down and you have the coronavirus thing right there.
Correct. And in all of our press releases and all of our media releases, we are putting the CDC, the CDPH, and the local Health Department hyperlinks in all of our documents so that they can get right to it. In addition to that, we have an after-hours urgent emergency number only. So from five to eight every night and on weekends, that number is three four nine four one oh four. That is really for leaders or emergency situations, so we can get you to a duty officer.
Hey, you know what? What I would like to do is take a quick, a quick break here and we'll get this fixed up so we can talk about that, because I think that's gonna be very important. So we could take a quick five-minute break and then we'll come back and continue, Denise.
All right.
Because I really think this is pertinent information to our public, so. So at this time, we're gonna take a five-minute break.
Okay.
Part of the problem is.
Closing, so I got, so I got one of my favorites.
Oh, they're closing?
Yeah. The coffee place.
Oh, man.
Sorry, guys.
Okay. All right, we're gonna go and bring the meeting back to order at 10:51 a.m.
Gonna bring the meeting back to order? All right, go ahead, Denise.
Okay, so on the public website, there'll be some changes made to this later today to make it a little more user-friendly. Right now, the coronavirus button is on our hot topics buttons and that's gonna be moved to a big button right in the middle of our screen. Okay, so if you click on the coronavirus, that opens up another page.
Let's hope it opens it up.
Hopefully.
Yay.
Okay, and now if you scroll down, you'll see all these links. And so this is what we're kind of updating today. So we're gonna be adding some links, there'll be a Spanish box there for anything and everything that we have in Spanish will be on there. We're gonna have another box for our press releases and we'll have another box for our FQ and As, like our, you know, questions and answers. So lots of people are sending in repeated questions and so we've put together a, a list of those and CDC and a local Health Department answers. The Mohawk is not up there, but we will be putting that on there today as well, but they are in every one of our, like, press releases and stuff that we're sending out. We're saying, go to the local Health Department website. In addition, and speaking with Super Chair Simon, and the thing about masks is you don't put the mask on the healthy person. If you work in a department where you work with the public or even retail stores, if somebody comes in and they have symptoms, they're coughing, whatever, the mask goes on the person with the symptoms, not the healthy people. So that has a lot to do, we're getting a lot of questions about masking, and that is the recommendation. It's droplets, the mask helps keep the droplets contained to that person, so. Okay? So yes, we are providing supplies to all of our local health providers. We're doing weekly requests and shipments up to the state and up to the national stockpile to make sure they have the supplies they need to take care of our community. But that's a big one. Put the mask on the person who's sick, not on the people who are well.
All right. Denise, thank you very much. I think getting that information out there on the website is, is very important. We are all getting emails and questions, especially from our senior community on, you know, just their concerns and other things. And I know I pointed a couple of folks there and they've replied back that they were able to find some of the information, but ultimately, having that accessible, I think, is just very important at this point. So thank you very much for being proactive on getting that.
Yeah, our goal today will be to have all those changes fixed.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you.
Can we get the light? Yeah, there we go. All right.
So Mr. Chair, I think we have one other person from DSS. Dina Eddings Green was gonna report on the Meals on Wheels program. You know, the Area Agency on Aging funds them. Come on up to the microphone if you would, Dina. And I know one of you had some concerns about how those programs are being managed through the local senior centers.
Yeah, I'll speak to that in a minute, yeah.
So our funding comes from the California Department of Aging and they have provided, provided us with some tools that we should be using. So all of the meals that are normally served at a congregate site, since all of the senior centers are closed, those meals are able to be picked up at the site or they are being delivered and then they are tracked separately so that we can continue to receive our funding. And we have canceled all of like the health promotion, health promotion classes that we had, Tai Chi, those have all been canceled until this has been resolved. And then everybody is still doing the Meals on Wheels as usual. All of the meals are still being approved by a dietitian, so they still have to submit their menus and things like that, like normal, and the Meals on Wheels is still the same. They are able to pick up like two weeks' worth of meals for a congregate, so they don't have to come to the center every day.
Excellent. Supervisor Brown.
So, so I asked that we get a report on this, but this is one component of it and I appreciate that, but the Meals on Wheels is, basically they're adjusting to what their normal audience is. Those, you know, and typically that's shut-ins and, you know, people that can't, can't normally get out. But in a situation like that, we've just increased the shut-ins by a lot. And it's not the typical senior center element that we're, we're looking at, but we're gonna be using them, this is what I envision, that we'll be using them as kind of a clearinghouse for a lot of this stuff. And, and I know Middletown, Middletown has a really effective program that they're doing right now. Lakeport's doing one, Clearlake's doing one. But is there, is there a possible, we have to make them work together. We get, or not make them, but we have to get them to all work together on the same, same thing and not just Meals on Wheels. You know, right now, we have people that, you know, they can't leave, so the demand's not gonna be there for a day or two, but by the end of the week it will, in the next week and however long this thing lasts, where we're gonna need people that need groceries delivered, brought to them, prescriptions filled, anything else that, that may come up. And so that's what I'm wanting to know where, if that's gonna be through social services, it shouldn't be through the Health Department, it shouldn't be through Sheriff's Department, it should be through the department that actually deals with that kind of stuff, where they're not necessarily doing it themselves, but they're overseeing exactly what everybody's doing, everybody's on the same page. Then, my, this is what I was envisioning, that we have a website address or phone number that anybody can call, it's consistent message, no matter where they are in the county, it doesn't make any difference, and the volunteers can either go through the senior centers or however that, that works. I think that would be the most appropriate, where they're trained for the types of contact and, you know, there's a lot of people that mean well, but you probably, it's probably not a good idea to have them out there, you know, helping. I think there needs to be a, a screening, a vetting of some sort in that regard as well. But we have, you know, somebody from social services actually identifying who's doing what and making sure that all of it's being done. And I would even go so far as to say, you know, I understand there was a press release done. I haven't, I hadn't seen it in Lake County News and I certainly didn't see it to record be, but I haven't seen it, but there should be, I would like to see something in each of our local media every day that says, again, you know, here's the contact information, so that people can, can go to that, any of those websites, KPFZ, whoever, any, any source that we have available, every day that there's some method that somebody can open up any given day and there it is. They don't have to go back and search a week ago or whatever, it's in there every single day. And they have that available. What I've learned over the years since the Valley Fire is, you know, I put my phone number out there for everybody, people are very respectful about it, but there's a level of reassurance that comes with these folks just knowing they have your number and knowing that somebody is available if they need it, instead of causing the panic. Because the biggest question I get is, where do I go to get this information? Not, not about the information, but where do I go to get it? So I think that's what we need to do, is make sure that, that availability, that information is available in one central area that we, that, that folks can go to, so.
And this would be an ideal topic of conversation for the Care and Shelter Team that is part of the EOC group. And I'm looking back at the Sheriff, because I know the EOC group has a virtual meeting scheduled at two o'clock today. The department heads that are part of the Care and Shelter Team had to leave, they were here earlier today. So I'd like to make sure we take up that discussion during the EOC meeting and see what provisions can be made. And just to make sure I'm understanding, you're talking about grocery delivery, medication delivery, the essential types of things that elders who are shut in during these unusual times are getting what they need.
Yeah, if we're, if we're expecting them and, and, you know, trying to help them to stay in and stay away from the possibility of, of, you know, catching anything like that, then we need to be prepared to help them to do that, you know, comfortably. It's bad enough to have to stay home, but when you're there and you don't really have anybody and, and you can't go get the stuff yourself, you don't have anybody, they need to know that they do have somebody and we have people available that will do that. I don't think it's gonna be huge widespread, but we do have a, a large, you know, the churches could be involved. There are people that are involved, you know, there's a lot of different areas that could be involved in this that are willing. I put out a thing yesterday just in Kelseyville, that, you know, if anybody needs any groceries or, or prescriptions, you know, get ahold of me and, you know, we'll get some volunteers. I was overwhelmed with volunteers, people that wanna help, genuinely wanna help, churches and just tons of people. It, it had, as of this morning, it's over 220 shares on it. I mean, there's a ton of people that, that are interested in helping with that. So we, we do have, we have a lot of people out there that wanna help and I think we could lighten the burden by allowing people to do that and doing it through the senior centers and AAA.
Well, I think it's a great topic. Obviously, each one of our districts, we all got senior centers in them and communicating, coordinating with them on what they're doing, I think, is the most important thing that we can do. I completely agree. Like I said, we're all getting emails and calls, especially from our elderly constituents, you know, getting them public health information, I think, is a lot of the questions that we're getting right now. And then just coordinating and communicating with our senior centers on what they need. But I think it's great conversation to have when we get something set up, but each one of them is doing a good job at this point. I know Middletown Senior Center was way proactive on these things. I think it got done very quickly and they're up and operating. That's why they weren't here today, because they did all their meal programs, started yesterday. So I think things are good and absolutely, I agree with you, Rob, and all of our numbers are available. You know, we can give them out today if you want on the, online right here. But I appreciate everything and we just need to have the conversation so we can bring it back some more and come up with some ideas as we get it put together.
Yeah, they, they are doing a good job, but I, we're, we're gonna ask of them to expand that, you know, beyond what they've ever done before with the same amount of resources probably. But we have a lot of volunteers that are out there available, so I think that we just need to, you know, provide the leadership for them on that, on exactly, you know, how that's gonna look.
Yeah. You know, and I think, like I said, they're proactive sometimes. They're way ahead of us probably about thinking about this, every elder that they have in their community, you know, and, and they know the vulnerable ones because they've had family and, you know, they've had those relationships built up. So that'll be a good thing with, with both the Area Aging Council and also us, how to support that, so. All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I know that was a, a long topic, a lot of questions all over the place, but for those of you listening on, in the public and out there in Lake County, cannot reiterate that this is a critical time anymore than Dr. Pace and Denise has done. And we as leadership here, sitting on this diocese and through the county, need to really follow that. I, we will work on that, we will work on that with our agendas. Each one of the departments is, are dealing with the public, but it's very clear right now, our best chance to slow this thing down at this point and mitigate it is social isolation and we need to take that seriously. Whether you believe this wholeheartedly or not, our opportunity is now and we need to act upon that. And we need to get better at it ourselves, I will say, because there's more than 25 people in this room right here. And so those are things that we're gonna all have to change our culture and our attitudes towards, and make sure that you are making decisions that are responsible for not only yourself, but also the community. Make sure it's a necessity that you're going out and you're doing these things. Your lives need to change, our lives need to change over the next three to four weeks, just as the schools have done and as leadership. So as you're making those decisions, going out in the future here for the next four weeks, be responsible, because you're not only taking care of yourself, you're taking care of your community, your friends, your family. And if you're irresponsible, that is not what we need right now. Be responsible, that's all we're asking. Be diligent in what we're doing and we're all gonna be hurting the same here, because there's a lot of businesses that are hurting right now, we're getting emails every day, but things are gonna change and they need to change, because as we got the report, there are very limited resources here in Lake County. And if this thing spikes like it has in other places, we're really gonna be hurting. So please, take this serious, do what you can. We understand everybody has limited resources, but make sure the trips that you're doing on a daily basis are essential. And Tina, you brought up a great point, don't take the whole family to the store, start to change those attitudes and hopefully it'll help mitigate these issues. and hopefully it'll help mitigate these issues. I've heard all the things from the Board of Supervisors today, looking on limiting and other things. We're going to talk about other issues here. But we're going to go ahead and be leaders in the community, and show you that we're taking this just as serious as our health professionals are, and really limit the things that we're doing. So, what I'm saying is be prepared for changes, be prepared, be prepared for maybe hours of operations changing, the availability to come in for counter service. Those are all things, over the next few weeks, we all need to be prepared for. I know we're here to serve the community, we need to do that in a safe and healthy way, and we need to be working on that on a daily basis. Department heads, Board of Supervisors, everybody in this situation, as we move forward, just like our business owners are doing right now, with takeout service at coffee shops, and everything that's happening. I think that's the most prudent thing we could do. And let's hope we're overreacting. But let's overreact in the right way here, and hopefully this will help mitigate our issues here. Yeah.
Moak, I just want to highlight the fact that you said overreacting. We're, I'm, I'm glad that we are. Another thing is, is that we talked about the Bay Area. Even in the Bay Area, funeral homes and morgues, they're, they're closed till April 8. So if someone passes in the meantime, they're not even capable of having funerals and whatnot. So, I mean, it hasn't come here yet, but just, I just want to put that out there for thought of end of life, too. So, it's just another, another, another thing to think about, if that makes any sense.
All right. And I know our health professionals have gone, because they've got a million meetings to get on. This will be on an agenda item every week. We'll get the information out there. If you're not able to go, come to the meeting, or get on the live stream, the public health, Denise said they're going to get their website set up, so the information is available there. Pay attention to anything that may be coming out, and press releases from Dr. Pace. I know the sheriff does a great job with his Facebook posts, and all that information out there. The information is there, and if you can't find it, call one of us, and hopefully we'll get you the right information, or point you in the right direction. And yeah, give out our numbers. My number, cell phone number is 707-533-9615.
Supervisor Brown?
695-0834.
849-4414. And I think it's important, too, to let the public know what communities we have. I'm District 4, so it's Lakeport, Sota, Sota Bay, up to the Riviera Heights, and the Scotts Valley area, and Finley.
EJ Crandall, 707-533-3385. Blue Lakes, Upper Lake, Lake Pillsbury, Nice, Laserna, Glen Haven, Clear Lake Oaks, Spring Valley.
Rob Brown, 911. Oh, sorry. Brian, that's your number, sorry.
My number's on the wall at the jail.
Yeah. 707-349-2628. And I, the whole county. I mean, I, I don't care who, who calls me, I don't care where you're from, where you're calling from, so.
Yeah. And I'm District 1, Moak Simon. But we're all in this together. We're one county, we're one tribe, we're one family. We've got to take care of each other. So, very important time. And I'm proud of this board, the way it's acting, and everybody, from department heads, everyone through the county, our leadership in the Sheriff's Department, Department of Health. We're only at the beginning of this, and we're going to do everything, like we said, at this point, to mitigate it, and then to attack it when it does get here. So, good discussion. I know it was very long.
I do have one question.
Yes, go ahead Supervisor Brown.
What, what are the tribes doing? What are the casinos doing?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. So, well, I can't speak for all. We are, there is a, there's some calls that'll happen this evening. But individually, each one of us, EJ has beat us to the punch at this point. But we are currently looking at phasing down our operations. Obviously, it's a huge decision, we've been working through the logistics of that. But pay attention for announcements as they're coming out.
Yep. Important for Robinson, the Robinson Ranch Area Citizens Business Council decided to close down operations as of 3:00 AM this morning. And so, they're, they will, they will keep looking into the situation, and, and deciding in a future, at a future time when to reopen. But in the meantime, they decided to, to close operations.
Yeah. Thank you for that information. I was going to ask that earlier, because it's, you know, such a huge employer for the county and all that, that is going to, is...
They do, they did also, they're going to keep paying the folks that are working, and essential employees like security, surveillance, things like that, will, will be doing other tasks and whatnot, and clean, and keeping it clean. And of course, if it's closed, you don't have to re-clean it.
Just the public is, yeah.
Yeah. And we're on the same path right now, obviously. And then, hopefully, what we can do is keep some of the workforce, instead of bringing out outside cleaning crews, we're looking to see if we can get our own folks to do that. So, we're going through the same thing at our large businesses, you know, all over, being the largest employer in South County, those are things we're looking at. We're, we're taking this as serious as everybody else, as we always do.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any more, any input?
Bill Kearney. I'm retired on Northlake Medical Pharmacies. But I just want to know if we're available to get medicine or groceries for other people, where we would put our number, so it would be published, so my wife and I could do that. We live out in Buckingham, but we would go any place to...
I think that was the point, that was part of the discussion that we had, where we're going to, at, at the, what, what did you call that meeting?
EOC meeting.
The, the, the EOC meeting.
Emergency Operations.
Emergency Operations, yeah. When they decide, you know, like the clearinghouse and working with the senior centers, that's probably where all this is going to go.
Okay. Well, I, I did contact you by Facebook, and I gave you...
Yeah, I appreciate that. I had, I'm not kidding, I had, it was unbelievable, the response from people that wanted to help, yeah.
I do just want to reiterate, at this point, the governor, other folks, I, they, they are requesting that folks above the age of 65 really look at limiting their, their movement. I, I just, that's the guidance, that's what they're doing. I just, I do want to reiterate that. You know, we've got to watch. We're even doing that with our volunteer workforce here, as we heard from some of the reports. So, I know that everybody wants to help, but I know at this point, too, we know with the critical, what this coronavirus, it attacks the, you know, the older folks in our communities, with obviously other conditions. But ultimately, I just, I just want to reiterate that also.
Well, I'm probably the oldest guy here, so I probably won't be doing that. Thank you, anyway.
Yep. Just to add, Rob, to another point, the United Pomo Nations Council is comprised of Lake Mendocino and Sonoma Counties, of Pomo tribes, since we all share the same type of casinos, demographic and whatnot. They're, they're having a call tonight.
Six, six or seven.
Yeah, six or seven, to discuss and coordinate what they're going to do about the casinos and whatnot, and other discussions about that as well. And so, I think that a, a lot of folks might have, have some input then, and there's maybe some actions that take place after that. But I just know that at Robinson, we've just been, the council of Robinson has just been ahead, and been wanting, and been concerned about it. So, so I just wanted to let you guys know about the United Pomo Nations Council as well.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Any more input? All right. That was a long report. It'll probably get longer each week. So, thank you, everyone, for sitting through it. I do want to make some announcements on the agenda here. The Board is aiming on this. What we're going to do is, we are going to pull the item 6.4, Presentation of the Annual Report by Lake County of PEG TV, and we'll look to put that on a later calendar. You know, we talked about nonessential stuff. And then also, there's been a request to pull item 6.6, our 10:00, 10:00 AM item, Consideration of CPS, HR, County of Lake Total Compensation Report. And at this time, we're going to pull that item also.
Thank you.
Excellent. So, we'll go ahead and move forward with item 6.5, Ag Department Ordinance of Industrial Hemp Regulations. And Supervisor Shabatia, once again, said this will be, hopefully, a short conversation. I just want to reiterate that, that we're trying to move along here.
So, I'm not going to bore you with all the details that I brought last time with my PowerPoint presentation, but I am going to provide some of the changes that were made based on the conversations we had. So, the first one is, we added a definition for Agricultural Commissioner, which means the Lake County Agricultural Commissioner, or his or her designee. We also did change key participants to match exactly what the rules and regulations are from the state of California and the federal government. So, we took out landowner, but the rest remains the same. It's a copy and paste from those federal and state rules. As far as the fingerprinting, again, we directed that attention directly to the state rules, Section 81013 of the Food and Agriculture Code. And again, it says, anybody with a felony 10-year-old that deals with substance, controlled substances, cannot be a part of the program. We added, from Steve's mention of notarized lease agreement, rather than just a lease agreement. We did keep the water board expiration date of October 31, 2020, and that's my idea of managing growth. We had that for cannabis at one point. There was some mentioning about the posting of industrial hemp signage. I know when I spoke with Steve, he wanted to make sure that we kept in there that you cannot put signs outside of, that you cannot put signs outside of the grow area, just around your grow area. We did change the wording for the pesticide operator identification number from the County Agricultural Commissioner, just to be more specific. And then, for the hearing and appeal process, we're allowing, obviously, the internal process to take place, but it's not an appeal. It's just the ag commissioner dealing with the applicants, trying to figure it out. If it can't be figured out, and it's an appeal, it goes directly to us, and we've tried to minimize the timeframe so that it comes to us very quickly. And then, I did add a permit renewal, because this is an annual permit. And so, I wanted to make sure and add language for the permit renewal. And again, just to highlight, this was their last time, that there is a request to, this ordinance shall be reviewed annually, just to check in on the new laws that may come into effect. And those are all the changes that we made, I believe. I didn't miss any of them. But those were the changes I made to the original that was brought to the board last week.
Supervisor Brown?
Steve's, since most of these were changes that you recommended, are you good with all that?
Yes.
I know the appeal, the appeal thing, the part of it, are you good with that? Okay.
Yeah. Steve and I worked real well together to make sure that we got everything on there.
Yeah, I'm good with all of it. I think it's great.
Any questions from the board at all? All right. Any public input on this item?
Shoot, you walked in just as he was, we were getting ready to approve it.
Perfect. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Brenna Sullivan, Lake County Farm Bureau. I was also on the ad hoc committee. I really appreciate you hearing my public comment today. There was one item in the ordinance that I request that you change at this point. There is that date of October 2020, that people are supposed to sign up with the Irrigated Lands Program by. And I understand the reason for doing this. It's kind of to gate hold a little bit, and let the county anticipate what you're going to have. It doesn't work the same way within our program, because we try to sign people up in the year that they are growing. So, respectfully, I request that you get rid of that component. It's just not going to work in terms of my staff of one person, and trying to anticipate the rush at the end of the year, when I'm trying to keep up with regulatory changes for 2020. So, if there's a county mechanism that we can use instead, because some people are going to go to the state, some people are going to sign up with me, and it's going to be hard to, you know, figure out where we are with that date. So, I can answer any questions on that.
And, and I will say that I put in there as a preference. I am absolutely not married to it. It doesn't have to be in the ordinance, and I'm willing to be open-minded about it, and move forward with it. And I think that's an easy fix, and I'm looking at Anita, where that would not be a new first reading, we would just be cutting out the before-expire date 2020, which should be simple.
You just amend it on its face. As amended, it will be a first reading today, if that's the determination of a majority of your board.
Okay.
That would be great, because that would allow, you know, as long as they're just signed up before they sign up with the county, that'll help, help it spread out for me. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenna. Any more public input on this item? All right. We'll go and bring it back to the board for action.
And if the board is good, and there's no further discussion, I move to approve the Ag Department Ordinance for Industrial Hemp Regulations.
You'd have to, you have to move to waive reading of the ordinance, and have it read in title only.
I'm reading it right off the packet.
Yeah.
Or, or you could have Joanna just read the whole thing.
As amended, but, but the amendment should be stated, so the public is clear.
Okay. Let me bring it up. I was just going...
Supervisors, I believe it's under Section 3-6, 3-71, Water Board Registration Requirements.
Microphone.
3-71, under those requirements, and it appears at the top of Page 4 on my document.
Central. Yep.
Said permit shall be obtained no later than October 31, 2020.
I'm going to make an attempt at this. Please correct me if I'm wrong. I move to approve an ordinance adding Article 7 to Chapter 3 of the Lake County Code to establish agricultural regulations and standards for the cultivation of industrial hemp, with an amendment to 3-71.1, that will remove said permit shall be obtained no later than October 31, 2020. This will be the first reading, with a second reading on March 24, 2020.
Basically, however, what you need to do is a motion to waive reading of the ordinance as amended, and have it read in title only. Then you have a second, a motion to advance the ordinance to the next board meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Third.
All right.
So, now the ordinance just has to be read in title.
Supervisor Brown, seconded.
No, I, third.
So, all in favor, say aye.
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 And then the second one again is, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. So, to have the ordinance read in title only, is an ordinance adding Article 7 to Chapter 3 of the Lake County Code to establish agricultural regulations and standards for the cultivation of industrial hemp. Now, it would be a motion to advance the ordinance as amended to the next board meeting.
So moved. Thank you very much, Ms. Grant.
Seconded by Supervisor Brown. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Almost four minutes.
There you go.
It's a record, Brenna.
Mark that calendar for Brenna.
I'm glad you were wearing the jacket, because I almost threw my wallet.
Don't hurt me.
Okay, moving right along. Item 7.2, Continuation of a Consideration of a Temporary Policy for Telework.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As per the direction your board gave staff last week, we did conduct an informal survey of department heads, asking department heads for the, to, to tell us which types of positions could benefit from telework. And, and so, from the survey, we had a majority of departments responding. There were four that, that did not respond. Of those responding, the total of 18 that responded, 11 departments indicated that, that they would like to have telework options, and they went on to describe the kinds of positions that could benefit from that. For example, the auditor controller is working on plans for continuity of operations during this. But a small department like that, for example, just using that as an example, there might be some employees that could benefit from telework. But that is a department that presently doesn't have laptops to provide those employees. So, there are some challenges to this that would need to be addressed, because departments would need to be able to provide, need to provide equipment. The Behavioral Health Department is a large self-funded department. They, too, thought that a number of staff could benefit from that, and they have a somewhat large number of devices they could provide staff to, to use in a teleworking situation. The Health Department is the same, very similar to Behavioral Health. They have the need, and also a number of devices. Departments also talked about various other kinds of connectivity that they may, may need. Some departments talked about, although perhaps not needing full access, that some limited access to the county network would be helpful. So, there's a variety of, of options and workarounds that, that departments presented. And we have Matthew and Shane up front, who may be able to answer more specific questions. I know Shane probably has some thoughts about how we could facilitate this. And so, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I'm hoping you'll add your comments to the discussion. Thank you, Shane.
Good morning. Shane French, Director of IT. There's definitely a, a few different ways that we could facilitate access for departments that want to perform telework. We're in a pretty good position with respect to our technical ability to provide that service. So, it would kind of be a matter of what is going to be permitted by your board, in terms of telework access for employees. Certainly, the departments that have their own equipment, that is going to be the best way to provide that access, because we have better ability to secure those devices. They're basically under our own management at this point. But it... But we could provide employees access from personal devices, you know, technically speaking. There is more risk associated with that, certainly, but in times like these, you have to kind of weigh that risk and decide whether or not the risk is acceptable, and we certainly have a variety of means of providing that. So certainly here, if you have any questions about that, we've taken some preliminary steps already to make sure that we have something in place if your board should decide that you want to move forward with this. So just looking for some direction at this point on how you would like to move forward on that.
Also, I should add that our technology committee meets on Thursday morning, if we do, and we have a meeting scheduled, I should say, and so that's really good timing if your board directed us to hammer out some kind of temporary policy and have something for your consideration by Tuesday. I imagine we probably could. And Matthew, did you have anything to add in particular?
I think Carol well summarized the data that we gathered from the department head survey. As she mentioned, there are some points of disconnect where we don't have county-owned devices, but there are workloads that are teleworkable. So that is something, and I would imagine that the time that would be required to reimage some of those devices, for example, would be fairly significant. So it may not be immediate, even, you know, so for example, some departments have devices that are assigned to a perfect, to a particular employee, and it may be a bit of a process to prepare that device for use by another employee whose workload may be teleworkable as opposed to the other employee. So there may be some additional challenges as we continue to work through this process, but certainly we'd be looking for your board's guidance in terms of what, to what degree that's a matter of priority right now in your board's, in your board's vision, and what level of risks your board finds to be acceptable in order to facilitate access for employees with regard to whether personal devices could be employed versus county-owned devices only.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you. I have a question for Shane. You had a feeling. What is, because there's, I think it was 11 departments that said that they were interested, what is our bandwidth capacity for all of a sudden so many people trying to access our network all at once, if it was allowed for all of them to access it all at once?
So we're actually in a pretty good spot with that right now, because your board recently authorized a request that we had for upgrading the bandwidth by, we basically have 500 megabits of bandwidth. We used to only have 100 megabits, we have 500, so we have five times the bandwidth we had even recently. So we're actually in a really good spot. Again, on a technical level, I don't see too many challenges. It's going to be a little bit bumpy at the start, because we just don't do this currently. So like I said, we've been doing some testing. I don't anticipate any capacity issues. Now, if you tell me tomorrow everybody's working from home, that can be slightly problematic, but there tends to be a solution to all of these things.
Right. And then I know that a lot of department heads have talked to me that some of their software is on the cloud. Is that accessible outside of the office already through just going through your web browser and access? And so some of it might be kind of a hybrid between you can work from home from your device, because you have your logins for these things, which are, I'm sure, highly encrypted, and so it's already safe to do that from home, but then they would still need access maybe to the network for specific files. And so there might be a hybrid rather than a complete thing? I don't know.
So typically, I would say no. Typically, when we set these things up, as a matter of course, we have folks unable to access cloud systems from their home unless there's, unless there's a reason to do that. So I would be surprised in a general sense if these things are accessible from home. That doesn't mean they cannot be configured that way, but typically, that's not the way we do it from the outset. But even so, typically, when you connect with a county device, everything tunnels through that connection. There's actually a security benefit to not having this parallel access to the internet and the county network while you're, while you're working from home. But again, I mean, those technical considerations can certainly be dealt with, and we have ways of handling that.
And thank you very much for the answers. My feeling on this, and I'm going to expand just a little bit more from telework to other things, and I think this is why it's so important that we look at the telework, is when I go through the hallways and I realize, I mean, especially when you go to community development area, it is packed with the public face-to-face with our staff, and we're telling people not to congregate, we're telling people not to go outside of their homes, but yet we have an incubator in our hallways that we may not be aware of. It's an invisible agent that we just don't get to see. And so I think that we, telework is the answer to reducing public access to our staff, but we also need to figure out how to make our staff still be accessible from the public. There's telephones, we can figure out other ways, maybe video conferencing, like we have set up in some of our conference rooms. But I think that we need to discuss this at a larger scale, and I think this is why we have to talk about telework, because right now I'm walking up and I kind of feel bad for our staff, because they're told to come to work and they're dealing with the public, and they might be a little bit nervous about who it is that they're dealing with, because we can't see who has what. So I think this is an important conversation, and I'm all for trying to open it up, and I did speak with Shane, and I think we as a board need to come up with a telework policy so that when it's, and it could be for emergency purposes, it doesn't have to be for permanent purposes, because we should be trying to provide guidance for all departments and giving them the flexibility to decide what they can do, rather than asking Shane what each department can do. And I think that we need to be the leaders on creating that policy, but again, creating flexibilities within the policy so that department heads can make their decisions.
Just really quickly, I think that's an important distinction as far as the policy for a temporary emergency-based telework is entirely different from a matter, of course, telework policy, because I feel like primarily any telework policy is not just an information technology thing. I mean, you're talking, you have to consider human resources considerations, privacy considerations, departmental issues with data security, so on and so forth. So, you know, sometimes when you're weighing these risks, you have to look at, hey, this is a temporary thing, we got to get people working at home, it's a matter of life safety in some sense. So it might make sense to accept more risk in the short term with a short-term telework policy.
Excellent. Shane, thank you.
Yep.
Any more questions from the board?
I don't have a question, I just want to follow up, because I agree, this is, you know, in an emergency situation, we need to have this policy in place, but developing it in an emergency is not always effective, so we miss a lot of things. I know this has come up a couple of times from one particular, I mean, we've got almost 1,000 employees, and we're, up until now, we were asked to develop a policy that would affect one employee from one department that gave us an ultimatum that she couldn't go to work for us unless we had this policy. So that's not, that's not good policy. That's not a good creation of policy or a good reason for it. And so I think, you know, the folks that are really impacted by it and can look at this thing with a set of eyes on, you know, how can we actually do it thoughtfully, that's what we need to do, and not try to develop, but, you know, the five of us trying to develop a policy because, you know, have good intentions. So that's unfortunate that we're in an emergency right now and considering this, but like I said before, we've had plenty of time to talk about it, and it hasn't come up, so now we, now we're here.
Any other comment from any board members?
Mr. Chair, as a point of further clarification, of the 11 departments that said yes, they could make use of teleworking options, not 100% of their employees by any means could do so, it kind of depends on the nature of the work, of course. And the, you know, similar to what Supervisor Sabatier was saying, it's, we're definitely at the point where we need to look at doing as many things as we can and many, as many services as we possibly can without requiring people to come into our offices. And so the other part of the discussion that needs to be had ASAP is what are those, those things that we can support by phone, or more things we can support in doing an electronic function? So, and Shane, in fact, you had some ideas about that, if you could speak to some of that?
Yeah, thank you, Carol. I was just going to mention that, you know, in the interest of providing as many services as possible in a non-face-to-face way, you know, we set, we have some video conferencing abilities, and in fact, a system that's supported by the county that would allow individuals to make use of video conferencing for the, you know, contacting the public. It works pretty well, and I think that departments should be considering workloads that might make sense to use that, and obviously, there's going to be some workaround managing the business process of implementing that, but I think some departments are already giving some consideration to those things, and to the extent that they have those needs, I think we have the technical ability to implement these things.
All right, thank you, Shane. Any public input on this item?
Scott DeLeone, Public Works, Water Resources, Interim, CDD. I am regrettably one of the four that didn't respond, so I apologize to admin for that. As you've all pointed out here, there are, Public Works and Water Resources could likely do things via telephone. We could take road complaints and things of that nature. We do get quite a bit of folks coming to the counter for maps, and we could, we could develop a workaround where people could order things and we could make that work. CDD, on the other hand, is, that's, that's our job, is to meet with the public, and I appreciate you pointing that out. The Building and Community Development Planning Department, there, there are a few positions in that department that could work from home, but as long as we are open to the public, it's going to be challenging for us to work around that. We have masks, we have things at the front counter, we have cleaning supplies, we have signs that if, you know, if you are symptomatic, please use a mask. You know, I think we're doing the best we can, but we, until something changes where we aren't available to the public, we're susceptible to that. So just wanted to point that out, and thank you.
Good point.
Thank you, Scott. And we do recognize, you know, that is, that is an issue. I mean, that's what we're talking about all across county, every business that we're dealing with, Scott, we do recognize that, so those are some discussions we definitely have. But we're on the topic of the temporary policy for telework and looking at continuation and consideration of that, and I definitely think it's better to be addressing it now. We're just in the beginning of what, we're talking about this today, this four to eight-week window to see where we go with the coronavirus, and I think the continuation of this, and then eventually, at another time, looking at developing a policy that may work in the future would be good. But for now, I completely support the policy, a temporary policy for telework. Be brought back to us.
We'll have something for you next week, and we'll also broaden the conversation with department heads about workarounds to enable the public to have less in-person contact, so ways to meet the public's need without public con, in-person contact.
I do have one other question. This, the governor's proclamation was kind of, it gave us a lot of authority to be able to do things, so are we able to, to waive or look past requirements that would otherwise be met for us as far as ADA and all that? Because those have been issues in the past.
I'm not, I haven't seen that, where we can waive accommodations.
Well, because we can't send buildings and grounds out there to make them ADA compliant at their home where they're going to be working, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good question, how, how the policy would address that, the teleworking policy would address that? Do you have a thought on that, Anita?
I'm going to have to go back and look at that, but it's, it is a very good question, and it's just going to have to be some adjustments made in light of the governor's executive orders and the strong encouragement throughout the state to shelter in place. So not everything is going to be able to be done within the same timeframes as it might otherwise. Some things are just going to have to be postponed.
Yeah, well, and those are the things, because those have been hindrances in the past to the, just normal operation, and, I mean, it's really easy to say, yeah, we, you know, we appreciate the staff, and we want you to be able to just take your laptop and go home and get your work done. And I wish it were that simple, but it's not, and, you know, we can't just, you know, we, by putting this kind of thing on, we create an expectation that anybody can do it, and it's, it's not. It's not the case, you know, and so we need to be realistic about it, instead of...
I can tell you that through my association, many are, and through risk management, they're looking to determine departments' essential functions, what, what things have to be performed and how, and they're looking at that now to try to develop guidelines for those kind of positions.
And I think weekly, it's going to be changing. Obviously, all these questions are being posed at CSAC. I know they're having calls, and also trying to get that across the governor's office and everything that we're dealing with. You know, I know that some of his proclamation also addressed some of the time clocks and other things that need to, that start when people are moving through government agencies here. I know he did suspend some of the stuff on non-essential, what do you call it, the Public Record Act and other things like that. So I know they're starting to address those things, because each day it's changing, so hopefully we can make sure that our CSAC reps are on those calls, we're getting the pertinent information, and hopefully it'll come down from the governor's office with each situation that we're dealing with.
Do we have, I should have asked this maybe earlier, do we have any thoughts on working with state legislature regarding legislative changes that we, and this, this might be one of them, if it's state law, that we have to provide this, maybe that. And then there's another one, I talked to sheriff about earlier, I brought up to him that, you know, minimizing the impact of the jail, we need to have state legislation to not require extraditions. You know, if people, if we have somebody that's on a Lake County warrant held somewhere else, they should keep them there until we get all this resolved, instead of bringing them up without us knowing what's coming into our jail, but we also don't want them to not pick up people who have extraditable warrants. So, you know, there's going to be some legislative changes required, I think.
And Senator McGuire and his staff have been in contact and basically just saying, let us know what you need, so we're happy to further any of those conversations you would like.
Also, I can tell you that Jennifer Henning, who's the executive director of the County Council's Association, is compiling lists, several have already been submitted to the governor for various deferments or things being held in abeyance temporarily. So if any of those apply to what you're talking about, I'm happy to contact her, and she'll add them to the list, as she's doing for all counties.
Is the list available to see what's already being requested, I wonder?
I can check. We've gone through it, it's, in terms of, my association's gone through what's already been added, and we know what's been added over time. I don't know if Jennifer would, would have a complete list, but I'll check with her after the board meeting.
There's a lot of statutory timeframes that need to be met, that won't be, and, I mean, there's a, there's a ton of stuff that comes up.
I know his proclamation addressed some of those statutory timeframes and the clocks, you know, all the starting and when things are extended to responses. So I know in his, in his, you know, in his initial proclamation, he addressed a lot of that stuff.
What that means, you know, it's like, you know, arraignment times have to be done within 48 hours, you know, there, there's just a lot of stuff that, that needs to be met, and what do you do if, in the event that that doesn't happen, you know, so, anyway.
Okay. All right, any more?
Telework, right?
Yes.
I just, just wanted to just make a statement about this. I mean, I see it's temporary, and I understand that, I've read that, and, you know, everything we're talking about is great, but, you know, we constantly are talking about appealing ways to keep people retained here at the county, and if we can get ahead of this, this is something we can have as another attribute to make people like working in Lake County. You know, we're not able to get all the funding we need when it comes to economic development all the time, you know, because of the fires and all these emergencies, but if we get ahead of something like this, this might be an appealing place to work. And so, and I know that's going to take a lot of work on our part, policy-wise, but it's not too out of the question. I mean, take advantage of the situation while we have it.
Point.
I agree that we need to be going forth and looking at policy for telework.
And we're talking about the temporary one today.
But I'm just saying, in general, like, if we, we can get to a position where it's more of a permanent thing, but in different areas, and making sure the policy is restructured so that that way, it's a more appealing attribute to getting people to come work for us and retain people in this county, so that way we're not struggling to fill positions and people aren't doing actual work, different tasks that they, you know, are overwhelmed with, so.
I think we're all in agreement there, as we move forward through this thing, but I think addressing the temporary policy telework is prudent at this time, and then continuing that on, because, you know, we had a bigger task on top of this, something we got to get done now, because we don't know what's going to happen in 48 hours or next week. I think getting temporary done and then being prepared, where this is, that's the groundwork for the long-term solution. I completely agree, but I agree with temporary.
I'm not trying to do a funnel, I'm just saying, once, once things get better, let's start talking about it.
Absolutely. Agreed.
I think along with that telework, we need to be looking at ways that we can remove our employees from the public as much as possible, you know, if they're not teleworking, trying to figure out workarounds, so they're not face-to-face with our public. I mean, even like with community development, can we put some sort of guards up?
They got the windows.
Glass, do they have glass up?
They have the windows.
They have, about eight months now.
All right. Well, I went up there, I didn't remember if there was, if there was glass or not.
It was really clean, you couldn't, yeah, you could tell.
Completely changed, yeah.
I was just going to say, this is a foot in the door, but I think we need to focus on the temporary, because it shouldn't be so hashed out that we don't have a policy by the time this is done. And I think we need to... And I think we need to not rush this through, but I think we need to do the necessity minimum standards to get people still working because I don't want to see people not working. I want to see something continue. There's something we don't talk about too much and that's if you're sitting at home for four weeks with nothing to do, that is rather depressing. And that is not something that I want to have, put our staff in a situation where they start feeling in the darkness. And the more we can keep these people productive, the more we can keep them focused on continuing to do a bit of normalcy, the better off we'll be when this is all done, rather than trying to recuperate from a different mental state as well, so.
Good point. All right, so I think you have your direction.
Yeah, and I want to thank Matthew and Shane for keeping the ball rolling with this. Their help is invaluable and much more to come.
Thank you guys.
Thank you. Item 7.3, consider accommodations of broader electronic access to the Board of Supervisors meetings in light of the COVID-19 and Executive Order N-2520.
And so this is a Shane and Matthew item as well. They have been exploring the possibilities and so, Matthew, I don't know if you'll let me put you on the spot, but if you could come up and talk about some of the information you've put together on this. And by the way, while he's coming up, we also just got notice that the city of Lakeport is converting to virtual meetings, so it seems to be the way to go and hopefully we could make that happen by the time you meet again.
Yes, Matthew Rothstein, Deputy County Administrative Officer. So, one of the wrinkles that we're actually running into is the fact that we have so many people that will typically participate when we have virtual meetings. We've had upwards of 5,000 people, it was almost 6,000 this morning, right?
Sam, come on up, yeah, if you'd like to be a part of it.
Almost 6,000 people this morning participating on Facebook, but that is a somewhat limited platform in that people can't submit comments unless they're a member of Facebook. So what we're trying to do is approach this from a couple of different perspectives, one of which is meeting people where they already are by, you know, utilizing the Facebook platform where we already have quite a number of people regularly engaging and also trying to provide an opportunity for people to comment if they're not necessarily a member of Facebook. One option, Granicus did recently enter into a partnership with another company where they have some options to provide comments in real time. We don't have cost information on that as I'm standing here right now, but that certainly could be one possibility. We're already putting out the Granicus feed, so that would be, if that's something that can accommodate the needs of our public more broadly, that would be certainly something to consider. We do have a phone system that allows things like call queuing, but as you guys will know from your experience in being on conference calls and things like that, depending on the quality with which it's moderated, depending on the experience of the person doing the moderating, that can be an experience that's pretty frustrating for people. So we are looking at what options are available. We had been evaluating Zoom meeting as one possibility, but it looks like that's not going to be able to accommodate the scale of potential participants that we would be looking to accommodate. So, but we also wanted to definitely make sure that we're taking advantage of this time of the relationships that we have in the community. We're very grateful, and we missed our presentation this morning, but Lake County PEG TV broadcasts these meetings on a weekly basis live and we're very grateful for that participation. It brings it into the homes of a lot of people. Some people may be unaware that if there are any non-emergent communications that need to be made to the board, and that can certainly include comments on any item that's on your board's agenda, those comments can be sent to vision@lakecountyca.gov. Again, that's vision@lakecountyca.gov. And for what it's worth, we did announce that availability of that option at the beginning of the meeting this morning. We received no emails through that portal today, though. However, there are quite a lot of people watching on Facebook. It's a little bit difficult because of latency issues, meaning that what's happening in real time and recorded and broadcast is not necessarily getting to people in their homes in real time. It's a little bit difficult to have, you know, the kind of back and forth without announcing prior to the item, for example, the, you know, where people are able to comment and then leaving some time and allowing those comments to come in and taking up those comments at the end of the meetings. Again, I think that's something with some planning that we could do, you know, even as soon as next week, to a greater extent than we're able to facilitate today, but it is something that will require some process changes to a certain extent, just to be sure that we're accommodating the audience that isn't here as much as the audience that is here. So, and I don't know if Sam is here as well, he may have additional comments to add to that.
Well, while Sam is coming up, Matthew, you said for the audience that is here versus the audience that isn't here.
Right.
Wouldn't the intent be to not have an audience in person?
Ideally.
Truly going to virtual mode?
Ideally, yes, but my presumption is that we may have some need of certain individuals to be present for particular items, so we would be, you know, certainly looking for feedback from...
I'm not sure. I think we're talking about going totally virtual and most of the board sees a different...
That would be even better.
Well, I think we have to allow for both ways, right?
Yeah, but what if people can't, don't have access to computers?
Yeah, we're going to discourage it, but we still have to allow for it, I think, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's been my understanding, that having some limited public availability, it's possible you can have locations that are not necessarily this board chambers, but those do need to be advertised and do need to accommodate people actually showing up. That's my understanding thus far. I don't know if Sam has items to add?
Also, I just really want to acknowledge, Matthew's just a gem to work with and he's such a valuable, valuable team member, I've got to just say that. The challenge that we have, one of the challenges that we have to address is that we are now also taking that, taking our broadcasts and we're putting up on YouTube. So we do have them there. The challenge is, is anytime, whatever we do, and even if we say we're doing it to YouTube or whatever, the majority of our audience, which is in the number anywhere from 5,800 to about 7,400, they always go back to Facebook. So we don't know the numbers of if we could feed this to Granicus, through Granicus, what those numbers would be. So that's the challenge that we have. And you have to be a member of Facebook to actually watch it on Facebook. So it's how do we accommodate the broader audience that we know is there because we're seeing it, but we can't, we're trying to find a venue that will reach the majority of our community.
Which that does. I mean, I recognize it's not going to reach everybody, but we hear that all the time, you know, that not everybody has a computer, not everybody, well, the majority of people do and we have no ability, I'm not sure we have an obligation, to make sure that everybody has access. They have access to come here. They have access, you know, there are ways they can do it, but it's not possible, nor is it required. And again, I'm not trying to be insensitive or anything, it's just they're trying to be realistic. You know, Facebook is a big venue for, big forum for people, but it doesn't address everybody, but I don't, you're not going to be able to, we're not going to be able to address everybody. So, it's like ADA, again, we go back to ADA. Not every single aspect of this building has to be ADA accessible, just has to be ADA accessible to the parts where, you know, not every bathroom has to be ADA accessible, as long as we have one, you know, that type of thing.
Just to, let me just address, because one of the things that came up, and this has come up before, is that we don't have closed captioning available. And see, one of my solutions to that was you used to be able to upload to YouTube and they would close caption after a couple of weeks. We've lost that ability, they're no longer doing it, I don't know, probably because of the vast amount of content that they're receiving. So our solution, a solution that is out there, which is an AI solution, artificial intelligence solution, is offered by a couple of companies. One is Epiphyn, there's another, and, but those solutions are about $1,900. And what it'll do is it'll translate, so that's, I just wanted to ask the ADA thing. That's one of the things that has come up.
Well, no, I'm using the ADA as an example of you don't have to have complete total 100% access to everybody for everything because it's not possible.
Right.
And that was one of the examples. We don't have, we don't have it in Spanish either. We don't have a translator, we don't have somebody standing up here with, doing hand, you know, like the governor.
I thought you were going to do that.
So, you know, I've, there's a few hand signals that I could offer, but I don't, you know, I'm not fluent, so.
Arthritis.
I'm sorry.
I just want to make sure that, you know, we don't overextend our, the realistic expectation that we have, so.
And there's just one more thing I wanted to add to this, is when we, hold on, I've got to control this. When we are broadcasting and if we're wanting to get content back, we're going to try to have dialogue comments that we can address. There's typically with Granicus, there's anywhere from a 90-second delay to 180-second delay. And with Facebook, it's pretty consistent, it's still about 120-second delay. So we can't, so in real time, we adjust for this, this part of this, in this feed now. I slow the audio down so that the video matches when we're broadcasting on PEG by example. You'll see that, so those are just, just so that you're aware, those are some of the concerns to look at. So that's it. And that's really all I have to say.
So I think if you look at, I mean, maybe not 10 years ago, but definitely 20 years ago, all there was was this, was just a room for people to come to. 9:00 AM has always been the time, it's part of the state's constitution to meet on Tuesdays at 9:00 AM. And so at one point it was this. Now we're on Facebook, now we're on PEG TV. I think that we are enhancing the access, at least to be informed. I'd love to figure out a way for the dialogue to happen. I think it's going to be a little difficult, maybe giving a 90-second pause between agenda items to make sure we get all of the comments, that might be something, or saying, you have two minutes, we're going to move on in two minutes and then give it two minutes. I think that's possible. The hard part for me and Supervisor Simon will have to be the deciding factor on this, but I know that as vice chair, there's the possibility that I might have to chair a board meeting. I think the chair has to be here to conduct the meeting because where's that technology in our homes? And so I think that there will still need to be somebody here to say, we have a question from this person, or in order to control the tone of the meeting and the pace of the meeting and who gets to say what when, it's going to be difficult if there's not a headquarters for that meeting. Also, as far as the public goes and them not being allowed to be banned necessarily from this room, I think we need to just say, if you're not here for this item, then please don't come into the room and then announce that we're moving on to another item outside and then please, those who are interested in coming in for this specific item, come on in. It's really nice and I love seeing people who want to stay here all day and be informed on what it is that we're doing and the decisions we're making, but they could also do that by just watching us on Facebook or on PEG TV. And I think right now with the situation we're in, we really need to push for, if you don't need to be here, then please don't be here. And that goes for us as well.
Superintendent Grant?
Yes. I was alluding to what Rob was saying earlier and then also what was discussed about the fact that a lot of the elderly don't have computers and whatnot, but at the same time, I know the senior community, if they're not going to have access to it because of this emergency, they're going to say, how do I get that? Get it for me grandson or friend or whoever, so I can be a part of that. And so I, it's an unfortunate time that we have to do this, but that's their mentality. You think Jean Polino is going to be like, I'm not, just not going to do anything, or he's going to get a computer and get online and type in a question to us or something like that. With that being said, we also need someone in the middle, kind of, you know, filtering what's said, because sometimes someone's going to get up here and say something that doesn't really apply or whatever, because if we, you know, so we have to really think about that as well, what's being asked and if it's prevalent in a priority system and having someone in the middle, so we're not wasting time, or not wasting time, but you know what I mean, we're actually talking about the situation.
Okay, I just, you just, I'd be thinking, there's one other thing that we did, which is we outreach to the local radio station. And so Andy and I are in communications that we're trying to figure out a way that we can take the Granicus feed and they can use the audio from that feed and actually broadcast it on air and see if there's a way that they can do questions. So I just wanted to let you know that we are looking at ways to do that so that we can expand our communication and to, just to the community. So I just thought I should enter that.
So, not to, this is not a question for you, this is a question for Anita. Anita, do you know about that? No kidding.
We're over here hatching, we're over here hatching a great idea. We were just thinking the drive-in movie theater is not in use for those that don't have a computer. You can just drive your car in, well, you, yeah.
I don't think it's legal to make people pay to be a part of our meetings.
Well, they're paying, paying dearly. The question I have would be, public hearings where people have to be sworn in and offer testimony, you can't have people answering, asking questions from the audience for that, can you? You know, that's...
Oh, people giving testimony are different than people who might have questions from the audience and people who just have questions or people who just want to make comments and think it's testimony. Those people could be done remotely. In other words, your board can distinguish here between, testimony to be relevant to your board has to be somebody who has actual knowledge about the case or the issue at hand.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a totally separate issue, but it is part of what we do, so, you know, if we're having public hearings.
Well, that's right, and part of what your board can determine, at least for a period of time, is what things to defer and hold in abeyance because it's difficult for you to handle it.
That's the thing that we'll be doing, obviously. Providing as much information as possible on what's going on with the emergency and then, like we said, I said it earlier to the community, things, things are going to change your next four to eight weeks and they may change drastically compared to where you're at and that'll be us guiding that as we move forward to address some of these issues where folks will have the information, but it won't be as much as a total participation. And we don't know where we're going to go in the future here for the next two to four months. So that'll be kind of our job as we're pushing this thing through and then communicating other ways as we're doing essential business items that need to be completed.
So while we're having this discussion though, and I don't, again, I don't expect we're going to resolve this here, but I just want to bring the questions up so that it can be resolved by somebody. Not just both Board of Supervisors, but Planning Commission. Those are things that have to be heard in order for somebody to move forward. If we tell somebody that now you can't move forward, they've got loans, they've got, you know, there's a lot of things, you know, permitting that, you know, comes to a screeching halt and we're trying to minimize that to the general public. Somebody getting a zoning permit or, you know, zoning change or something like that, that doesn't affect the health and safety of others around them, but it does affect the economic health. And so, you know, how do we, I'm not saying, I'm not asking the questions, I'm asking it rhetorically, we can come back with an answer to that, but at some point, those are things that we need to address on how we're going to deal with that.
And the thought would be, if it's to the liking of community development, is that whatever is decided for your board members be the same technology that's implemented for Planning Commission meetings as well. And so I want to look back at the team that's been working on this and ask, is it realistic to think we can have a much improved virtual presence by next week?
Yeah, I was going to mention that I think there's, we're talking about two different things here, really. We're talking about first, the desire to more broadly disseminate the information in these meetings, which is kind of what Granicus would do, what Facebook would do. It's not as participatory as, you know, these kind of gatherings where you have folks here actually giving testimony or input, public input. And I think for the purposes of allowing the public or others to give input, I think that's a solvable problem from a technology perspective. In the case of a CDD meeting, or rather a Planning Commission meeting, you certainly could use tools available to us to produce documents that everybody in this room could see and certainly the individual that's remote could give that to all the folks in this room. I just don't see that as a problem that's not solvable, so I think that would be a really good way to do that.
Okay.
If that's helpful.
Superintendent Grant?
And I just wanted to mention that just yesterday, or started the conversation on Friday with John Benoit, the executive director of LAFCO, and yesterday we canceled our meeting and the expectation is we're working over the course of next month to figure out how to do those virtual types of meetings because we anticipate that that's still the world we're going to live in next month. And so I think that every group that, I think those meetings are important to ensure that there's continuity in the actions that we would need to take in this community to get things done, to get permits signed, to get actions taken, but I think that we need to all figure it out and I think we are all working towards that greater goal of making sure that we can still continue to have those meetings, but they're going to have to be semi or fully virtual.
Yeah, it's a real challenge, especially, you know, with the president coming out and, you know, they're trying to get down to 10 people or less. they're trying to get down to 10 people or less. And so, you know, today, we were challenged with that, just with what we had on the agenda today, earlier, and for the next couple of months, I mean, I can't reiterate it enough here, the government, the community that you're living, there are going to be changes, and we just have got to adapt to those. I think whatever we can do to facilitate these meetings as much as possible to the broader community, through livestream, Facebook, whatever, we need to take those steps, and be realistic, that it's gonna be a work in progress as we move through that. And communicating that out to the public's very important, we can do that, hopefully, with some press releases and other things, that we are working on it, but we're not the only ones working on it. I appreciated the broadband challenge, or the question earlier, because every organization right now is working on that in Lake County, besides the coffee shops and other things that have to be in there, and some of the food restaurants, every business owner right now is figuring how to do telework with all of their employees, and pretty soon, everybody's gonna be on it. So, that's where we're at right now. All right. So do we need, there's no action on this, right, just a report?
No, but we'll be back with some action ASAP.
Okay. All right, moving on, item 7.4, consideration of the structure...
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Matthew, thank you. Shane? Item 7.4, consideration of structure of Department of Public Works and the Community Development Department. So, I know Supervisor Sabatier wanted to get this on the agenda here, and have a discussion as we move forward, I would just like to preference the discussion with everything that we have going on, hopefully we can keep this pretty simple, to the point of moving forward, or kind of solidifying thing for the next few months. It's gonna be a challenge, moving forward, to be recruiting, and, you know, other things right now, especially in the environment we're in in this country, so Supervisor Sabatier?
So I know that there was a change not too long ago, maybe, I don't know, what was it, six months ago, where we added Water Resources to Director DeLeon's plate, and then last two months, or a month ago, added CDD as well. Just been checking in with him, making sure that, to me, that seems somewhat overwhelming to have that many departments, none of those departments have deputy directors in there at this moment in time, and so, one of the things that was brought to my attention is, being interim makes it difficult to know exactly, or to make changes, structural changes, and in a sense, we kind of need some stability, especially in this time right now, to be able to move forward on things that we see that aren't working, that need to be changed. So I wanted to bring it up, so that we can review how things are going right now, and what is it that we would like to solidify? Do we want to continue that as an interim basis? Do we want to say that we want to make things permanent? And my opinion is, I go to Mr. DeLeon and ask him, what's his view, what's his perspective? He's the one dealing with the workload, he's the one seeing what's really going on in those departments, and I thought that we'd open up that discussion. And I know also, one of his comments was the difficulties, not necessarily difficulties, but the challenge of working on the upcoming 2020, 2021 budget, being in an interim position. So I'd like to open it up for Scott DeLeon to speak on this, and I'm happy to keep this as short as possible, but I think it's still something that we should be discussing.
Well, I appreciate that, and, yeah, the heart of the matter is, you know, we're trying to prepare budgets, and I've got three departments that are, or at least two, that are trying to figure out what we're doing, are we combining, are we, you know, what's happening? And I, you know, what our approach, I think, right now is, is we're gonna, we're gonna develop these budgets as separate departments, as they are kind of right now, with the plan that if, depending on what your board's direction is, and if we go to do some type of consolidation, that we would probably deal with that at mid-year, next year. We're running out of time in order to meet the deadlines for admin, it's gonna be very difficult to retool three departments into one, and meet that deadline, but I think that moving forward, if that's the direction you want us to pursue, I think that we can continue to do that, and look at that, and, again, make adjustments as necessary. I think, you know, you mentioned, how are things going? Yes, I, we are extremely busy. I mentioned earlier, I was one of the four departments that didn't respond, and it wasn't intentional, it just was one of those things that I just didn't get a response in. Were, there were a lot of things that I want to do, specifically with community development, there's things that, changes that I see that I think need to happen, in order to accomplish the vision and the direction that I see this board wanting, and some of them, we've already done. We've implemented some changes in the way we process minor use permits, for example. I've asked the Planning Commission to add a third meeting this month, and though that's a bit of influx right now, you know, we're trying to do some things to help move things Looking to add temporary staff with extra help. And so we're doing a number of things to try to move things forward, and I think the morale is great, I think things have significantly changed there, and on the third floor, and we're just gonna continue to move forward. And again, I don't think I have time to make a comprehensive combination of the three departments into one, and meet the deadlines for the budget, but we can continue to work that way, if that's the direction you'd like us to go.
Supervisor Brown.
Are you looking for input from the board, as far as what we envision to go, or are we gonna kind of hold off? Because I can do either one, I know how I feel about it, but I certainly can't.
So my opinion on it is, that I think it's unhealthy to remain in the interim.
I agree.
And I think we've seen that in the past, and so, because it's not just interim for one department, or interim for two, it's interim for two, plus another department already, and so I just, I think to solidify what our vision, and what our aim is, is not a bad thing for us to figure out, but at the same time, we're limited on our time, we're trying to make these meetings go quickly right now, so that we can get to the more virtual part, but I was just looking for board direction, because right now, we gave a direction, and we haven't come back to a kind of review where we are, and how are things going, and what direction, what's our angle?
And I'd like to also mention, I failed to earlier, I did complete a recruitment for a deputy director of community development, she's gonna start towards the end of April, first part of May, very excited about that. She just appears to be just a terrific person, the staff has met her, I think she's gonna fit in very well, and I'm excited to be able to add that to the staff.
That's awesome.
That's great to hear.
Director DeLeon, do you expect any problem with that individual arriving here, in light of these developments?
Yeah, yes, you know, as things change by the hour, you know, I don't know, I know her intention is to get here, and she's very excited about getting here, so I think where there's a will, there's a way, and...
It's just unprecedented.
Right, yep.
Okay. Supervisor Brown?
That's it.
All right. Tina, you do?
I think it'd be hard to make any decisions where we sit right now. I hate to do that, I like looking to the future, what we want to see, I just don't know if we can see that future. I'm really excited that you have somebody that's gonna be coming in and helping you, and I think maybe wait and see how that works out, and see how the workload, and...
I'm gonna, I'm going to, and I appreciate that, we've thrown this in your lap, and I appreciate the uncertainty, and we certainly have lots of other, much more pressing issues to deal with. I think what I'm going to do is proceed with the thought of a combined department with deputy directors, and I'm gonna set up, budgetary-wise, I'm gonna set up for that. Position allocations, as part of my budget, there's going to be some revisions, there's gonna be some things that I want to do with CDD, and I'm gonna put those in place, and I believe that if you choose to leave the department separate, you can still use that model, and, but if you combine them, then that management and administrative arrangement is in place.
We appreciate that, Scott.
I think it'd be easier to plan, I think it'd be easier to plan it that way, and then not do it, than to do it the other way around. So I think I'm gonna plan on with position allocations, and salary, and everything, the way that I would like to see it set up, and then, again, you can still use it, if we decide to keep the departments separate.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier.
And I was just saying, as a final comment, hopefully this is something that we can come back to during our budget meetings, just to kind of, again, get another eye on this subject, to see where we're at, and what does it look like, and hopefully we'll be in a better situation to spend more time to discuss it.
Absolutely, and I'm just so grateful to Scott for all of what he's doing, it's made a tremendous difference, and the other obvious thing I'll throw out, even if you were in a position to split the departments and recruit for CDD director, I don't know that you would get applicants right now, it's just, we're in this no man's land, so the likelihood of attracting a candidate would be challenged.
I completely agree, and I want to echo too, you know, the change, the culture change, it's already happened up there on the third floor, Scott, excellent job.
Thank you.
You know, to see three Planning Commission meetings even on the calendar, very exciting. I know my planning commissioner has been tired of going to meetings with one or two items, and really appreciates that, so thank you very much for everything that's been done, and the public is really the ones that are singing the praise of what's happening up there at community development. All of our businesses, our developers, our construction guys that are coming in to do things, even our homeowners are completely changed on what they're doing, so that, very commendable of you, and all the workers in the departments, I know, we're all a team, and you're a team, and your departments, and I'm glad it's going in the direction that it has, so thank you very much.
There's some really good people up there, and they're working hard, and I appreciate your comments.
And for me, I think that's the key, though, Scott, is your leadership style, I think you kind of bring that out in certain folks, and so I understand that there's some reluctance for having all departments under one person, or whatever the case may be, but if we have significant deputy directors, with you still leading, it kind of gives that atmosphere of positivity, and moving forward with these different things.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm good, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I ask you to go back to 6.3 for just a minute? I had another piece of information related to the consideration of update of the coronavirus.
Yes, we'll move back to item 6.3.
So I asked Johanna to put up the front page of the county website, and I just wanted to show you that we've already made the fixes you asked for, where the COVID-19 information is much more prominent. So she's just below the top of the screen, I had her scroll down a little, but under popular up there, you'll see COVID-19 information, and then below, for the bottom of the screen, it is again, with the big color picture. Johanna, could you hit that and see what it takes us to? I presume it's taking us to the health services stuff that Denise Pomeroy was reviewing with you earlier? I just wanted to call it out, so you could see that it's much more prominent now, and so there's all the information that Director Pomeroy was talking about. So then, Johanna, if you could go back, just go back to where you started, and then show the board how close that is to the top, so scroll it back down. So it's nearly at the top where you see that, so does that work for your board, does that? Yeah. So it's really, you have to trip over it first, before you go to other stuff.
I wish the search wasn't so prominent, but that's another story.
And then, well, so they can enter it there if they wish as well. The other thing that I just, it's a small thing, but I wanted you to be aware of it, the coffee kiosk has closed at noon today. They were planning to stay open, but in light of the court closures, they were gonna stay open with reduced hours, but with the court closure, they are closing now until further notice, understandably.
All right.
So for the deed to your house, I have two rolls of toilet paper, and the rest of my coffee here, if you guys...
Making a deal. All right, moving right along. So item 7.5, consideration of following appointments to the Audit Committee. I don't know if this is a district...
I believe it was from Kelseyville.
Yeah.
This is a gentleman that has served on the Audit Committee in the past, although his appointment had expired, I believe, at the end of the 2019 year, the Auditor Controller is recommending that he be reappointed.
Okay, would anyone like to pick that? Any comment from the board? Any public input? All right, we'll bring it back.
They left us.
Anyone like to make a motion?
Rob, are you good with this?
Go ahead, yeah, I'm fine, yeah.
I move to approve Ronald Nagy to the Audit Committee.
Second.
And actually, he's in Tina's district now, he used to be in mine, my first appointment, so, yeah. He lives in Sault Ste. Bay.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 7.6, consideration of proposed findings of fact and decision in the appeal of Antonio Andorra Ferrari, AB 1902. Carrera Ferrari.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the findings are before you, one of the supervisors did alert me to the fact that there's a typo on page three, line 17, the line should read property to the applicants, through their property to the applicant's property should not be overburdened by the commercial use. So if your board would make that change, unless supervisors have other changes to it, the findings may be approved by motion, the appeal denied by motion. And yes, you can do that in one motion, if you're so inclined.
Okay. All right, any discussion from the board? Any public input? If none, we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Move to approve the proposed findings of fact and decision in the appeal of Antonio Andorra Ferrer, AB 19-02, with amendments as stated by Ms. Graham.
Second.
All right, motion's a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion passes, all right.
And then a motion to deny the appeal.
Oh, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Scott. Any public input? No. Bring it back to the board for action. Yeah, we already did the motion, sorry, I confused with no public out there. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
May I ask at some point if your board would be willing to go back to the extra item 4.4, the resolution regarding the evictions? I just wanted to ask your board a question, to see if you wanted some clarification.
Do we need to do a motion on that, or can we just open it back up as a consensus of the board?
Well, that would be a motion for reconsideration, so...
Okay.
Second.
Motion's a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Just out of an abundance of caution, I'm wondering if your board wants to clarify in the resolution, that of course, what you're talking about is only for the unincorporated area of the county, you can't do that. If that is your choice, then I would suggest that you might want to reconsider the resolution, and on page two, line two, after the words residential or commercial property, add in the unincorporated area of the county. That way, the public won't be...
I actually wondered about that, but I didn't, yeah.
I think it would be a good clarification, so the public understands that this only goes to the areas clearly within your board's purview, and if you would approve that amendment, then I'd ask that you offer the resolution again. My apologies. My apologies for not making that in the first place.
Thank you, Nina.
I offer the resolution with said amendments.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye. Yep.
Aye.
Okay. I think what we have left is calendars at this point.
That should be pretty simple.
Should be like, Supervisor Sabatier?
Everything has pretty much been canceled thus far. I will be phoning in, thanks to the email received from our public health staff. I will be phoning into the DOCs just to check in every morning how things are moving along, since it is an hour-by-hour evolution on this situation. I will be having a conversation with a gentleman from CSAC on Friday, and be back here, or be back in my office, possibly to have a telephone call with Ms. Hutchinson to get prepared for the next meeting, rather than a face-to-face meeting, and we'll go from there. Also, I did want to say a quick congratulations, because I know that I'm really happy that this gentleman has been a part of our processes, and that's Mr. Lance Williams. He's been a very helpful voice in moving forward on cannabis issues and hemp issues. I think that he is a very even-keeled personality that was a needed voice for those types of issues. And as of last Thursday, when I sat in the Planning Commission because of the conversation about the Maha project that I wanted to learn more about, he was also approved for his project. And so I just wanted to congratulate him publicly and say thank you for all his efforts to help us move in the right direction, too.
Supervisor Scott?
As you said, most of our meetings have turned into phone calls. I have a continued care meeting on the 19th at 9:00 a.m. I do have a law library meeting that hasn't been canceled, that's at noon on Thursday, and then I'll be at the Warming Center, which I believe they're going to be moving facilities to a larger facility to be able to keep that community spacing for our homeless neighbors. On the 20th, I was supposed to be having a meeting with Congressman Thompson. Has that all been canceled? The Congressman, excuse me, the Congressman Thompson meeting has been canceled. It was going to be Friday afternoon, and it was going to be on homeless issues, and I believe I had asked them to extend an invitation to you and to Supervisor Sabatier. That won't be happening. Thompson, of course, is making COVID the priority, and so, but instead, we have arranged a conference call with the Congressman and Dr. Pace and myself for tomorrow afternoon. So if any of your board would like me to share that call-in number, once it is provided to me, I can. And are we still having a meeting at 2:00 today? Is... At 2:00 today? I do not think so. We were going to meet and talk about department head evaluation process, because the EOC meeting is now at 2:00. I would like to forego that if we can. It's just, you know, some of the stuff that's not as critical as other, so. And then, back here on Monday, prepare for Tuesday, and we'll see how that goes.
Supervisor Crandall?
So, well, no meeting at 2:00, that was planned for evaluations. Tomorrow, the Worth Town Hall is canceled due to this situation, the epidemic, and then Thursday, the Lath Town Council is canceled as well. Friday, I think we still have a Workforce Alliance meeting. I haven't heard anything otherwise, but usually, we meet in the Conference Room B, so I think we might be okay on that. If not, we'll find out if we cancel, if it's canceled or not. Clash Against Trash, or the North Shore Beautification Project that was going on on the 21st, has been postponed as well. And so that puts me in a position to be back here on Monday to prepare for the meeting. But then again, I've been also in a family situation where my mother-in-law is in dire condition, and I may be, you know, involved with that, but I will always have my phone accessible in this situation, available at any time, and so I will be answering any concerns or issues that come up, so.
Supervisor Brown?
Well, yeah, my calendar is nothing. I mean, I've had a lot of stuff, but every single thing has been... The tax collector meeting that we had on Monday, that's, I missed what you said about that, or did you even have that down?
No, that's, I'm going to talk about that on Monday, the 23rd.
Yeah.
I did not talk about that.
Okay. So I still got that on my calendar, so that's the only thing. I had, I had a lot of stuff lined up, but it's all been continued indefinitely, so...
Yeah. Thank you, Supervisor Brown. Same thing, a lot of cancellations of meetings, obviously. We'll be calling into mostly, hopefully, the, well, I'm going to make the 1:00 call, but 2:00 call this afternoon, the coronavirus planning conference call. Trying just to stay up to date with everything that's happening. Ultimately, I think only thing to report over the weekend, I know that I was, attended a meeting in Anderson Springs. There are some folks on the new sewer system over there that are being hooked up at this point, so that was a good meeting on Saturday. It was a small gathering in the rain, but folks came out to talk, meet with Jan and special districts and coordinators there to move forward with that project. The only other meeting that I have that has not been affected at this point will be the North Bay Alliance on Friday, and like EJ said, we usually come to the office here and call in out of Conference Room B if that has gone forward. I haven't seen any changes in that manner. After this, I'll do a gender review, and then just trying to get the information out to the community. And things are going to be changing on a daily basis, probably change while we're sitting here in the meetings, what's going on. So be safe out there, follow the guidance the best that you can, and that's all I have. And with that, we'll go into closed session. Closed session item 8.1, conference with labor negotiator, chief negotiator, Imlong County negotiators Hutchinson and Pam Semick, and B, employee organizations LCDDAA, LCDSA, LCCOA, LCEA, LCSEA, and LCSMA. Also, 8.2, public employee evaluations, animal control director. Item 8.3, conference with temporary representatives designated to meet with the county department heads regarding salary and benefits, and B, unrepresentative management employees. 8.4, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D2E3, threat of litigation, City of Clear Lake. Item 8.5, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9D1, Ugorji versus County of Lake. And item 8.6, public employee evaluations.
That one is canceled.
We're going to pull that item?
Yeah.
We're going to pull 8.6, so that's it. With that, we're going to close session. Thank you, Sam. Thank you, John.